Oh, happy day. Hope it's time. It's time. Time and I'm not ready. I just sent Michael a text. Get here. We need the boy.
Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Albany City Council meeting for December 4th, 2017. Please join Councilmember Moss in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unashamed, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnes? Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Councilmember Nathan?
Here.
Councilmember Pilch?
Here.
Mayor McQuaid?
Here, and I'll note that Councilmember Barnes is also now here. Report on action taken in closed session. Council gave staff direction on how to proceed enclosed session items. Consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the item from the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item?
Ah, yes. 5'8", 5'11" and 5'12".
Does any member of the public wish to pull an item? Okay, 5'8".
5'8", I'd just like to pull for a separate vote. And then for items 5'11" and 5'12", I just wanted to make sure that instead of just passing over, or instead of just acknowledging in consent that we actually, that I and probably speak for the council, thank Arthur and Darla for their service to the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will, we will pull. Did you want to say something?
Oh, I did want to mention because I had told some staff members that I would likely pull 5'13", that they provided me with sufficient information that I don't feel like it's necessary.
Okay, so could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding 5'8"?
I have a speaker card for 5'9".
Um, 5'9"?
Sonia.
Have it? You filled out a speaker card for 5'9"? So, did you want to speak about it?
Would you come up to the microphone, please? Right up here, thank you.
I guess I just wanted to say thank you more than anything, just for contributing to that fund. My classmate Marco also wanted to say something, I don't know if you saw that. But, um, I guess just, it means a lot. I've grown up in Kensington my whole life. I go to SMU as a nursing student. Taking away Altibates would, in my opinion, be really, really detrimental to West County. On a whole, I've worked on ambulances, I work in an ER now. And I just, it's, I was born there. I just think it's an amazing place. It does an incredible amount for this community. And I guess just kind of from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you for contributing to that, so that people can see how much Altibates does matter to the people of Albany and El Cerrito and Kensington and Richmond and everyone here. So I guess that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I too am also a nursing student at Samuel Mary University. And I also wanted to say thank you to the council members for contributing the $5,000 from the discretionary funds to the health impact assessment. As a future R and with possible employment in this area, it bothers me to see that Altibates has the potential to go away, which could detrimentally impact the healthcare of the residents. So, I applaud you for taking a stand and trying to not have that happen.
Thank you. Is that all you have? Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding 5-8.
So moved.
Second.
Pull the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes? Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes. And now can I get a motion to approve item 5-8?
So moved.
I'll second.
Pull the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
No, for the reasons that I brought up in the last council meeting.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. And that brings us to good of the city. Good of the city is a time for persons desiring to address the City Council on an item that is not on the agenda. Please note, city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. If you have turned in a speaker card, good of the city, which is items not on the agenda, so if you're here for the Canes-Adams discussion, we'll get to you, just stay in your seat for right now. Anything else that's not on the agenda? You think, do you have names? Okay, you want to read them?
Elaine and Jeremiah.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Elaine. I'm just here to say thank you to the City of Albany, and the holidays are coming up. The holidays are coming up, thank you for that. And I just wanted to thank Madam Mayor McQuaid and City Council members and the City of Albany staff, and I just want to wish you all a happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, City Council. I'm here today to talk about a few things. One issue is the school zones that I have suggested before and would like to re-suggest again. Might be something to look into for our city. School zones makes it able to where our city has, you know, where you load and drop off in the morning and afternoon, your kids. The lowest speed limit in Albany right now is 25 miles an hour. So, I, right now with no school zones, there's no reduced speed in Albany, and it's a high traffic city. I forgot my Gordo's burrito, but I ate half of it. I usually eat the whole thing, except for this time. I almost got hit by a car on the way here, and on Solano, I was trying to cross right there on San Carlos. On Solano, and it's nighttime, and there's no pedestrian crossing sign for cars, letting people know that there's people crossing the sign right there. And so I suggest an LED light for there, and also Canes and Marin. It's really dark right there, we've improved it a lot, except for the lighting on Canes and Marin. Crossing Marin on Canes is very dangerous as a pedestrian at nighttime. I suggest possibly an LED light crosswalk for that intersection. A little bit of lighting might help save a life. Also, I have some other things to talk about here, still got a minute and a half. So, also one thing is, I'd like to give this to you. This is my contact information. I don't know if you guys need my contact information or not, but I really would like to suggest, I don't know how the formal way to say it, is to put school zones on a future agenda. To where we could talk about it on maybe in this five section here, five through something, maybe it could be one of those things, we can talk about school zones. You know, the pros and cons of having school zones. I know Jerry Brown, I have emails from Jerry Brown for a few years ago now, saying that if we get school zones in our city, we can get the state school zone grant, which is $100,000 a year, which also funds 10 crossing guards. And $100,000 to make getting to school safer, for like LED crosswalks and to repaint them every year and things like that, to help for the budget and public works. So I think that'd be a great thing for our city. And also, I put in a work order for public works for the school safety sign on Cornell and Solano. It'd be nice to see it up, because it's school time right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for good of the city? Okay, seeing no one. Councilmember reports on meetings attended, announcements of future meetings, city manager report. I'll start. I attended the Altibates Regional Task Force. I went to the Earthquake County Alliance meeting with Fire Chief Hawkins. Several of us were at the opening of the Aloney Greenway. I also went to the Senior Center Holiday Sale and the Staff Recognition Celebration. Just as an aside, I've been appointed as Keith Carson's alternate to Alameda County Transportation Commission. And I just want to share with you that yesterday, I had the honor of going to a Make-A-Wish Foundation celebration for Albany girl goes to Cornell School, and her wish was to go to Disney World, where she'll be going with her family next weekend. But it was a really wonderful experience to get to do that. And the last thing I want to say is, we got an email today from Barbara Lee, reminding us that she does have staff in Albany on Wednesdays, or she will this coming Wednesday at least, from 3:00 to 5:00, here at the Community Center. So if you have any issues that you would like to share with Congresswoman Barbara Lee's staff, Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00 is the time. Anybody else? Michelle?
Nothing? Okay. I did a number of those things. The Altibates, I wanted to mention that a forum is being planned for early February. It'll be in Berkeley, on the potential closure of Altibates and alternatives. So I'd encourage you to set aside, I think that's February 3rd, as a day to attend that forum. And the other festive events, I was part of as well.
Do we have an interim city manager report?
Yeah, a couple of quick items. If you've been down Solano, Lower Solano lately, you see that the construction has begun for the parklet in front of As You Wish Frozen Yogurt and House Coffee. We're looking forward to that opening in about a month. There is now water, our first water bottle filling station out front of the Dartmouth Tot Lot. I saw it being installed with my very own eyes last Friday. Looks great, and it's very functional, so try it out. It might be a nice model that we see around town. Also, we are expecting the response for the request for proposals for the Sequoia Analysis for the Albany Neck and Bulb to be submitted December 8th. So we're hoping to get a significant number of responses to that and moving forward with that process. And finally, the Peggy Thompson Pier Street Park, we're in the final stages. We expect PG&E to be out there next week to do the electrical work, we expect. And we are also getting the last benches in and working with the Thompson family. So hopefully, we'll have a grand opening in early 2018.
Great, great. Okay, anybody else? We have no presentation, we have no public hearing, we have no unfinished business, new business. 11-1. Resolution for exception to the 180-day wait period pursuant to Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21221H. May we have a staff report, please?
I'd like to introduce our Human Resources Director, in case some of you haven't seen her face. She's newer to the city, and we're very happy to have her, Melissa Rojas.
Good evening, council members and mayor. The item before you is in regards to the Public Employee Pension Reform Act of 2013, which is also known as PEPRA. It requires retirees to wait 180 days after retirement before returning to work for any public agency. This waiting period can be waived if the City Council determines a critical need to fill up a specific position. Therefore, this request is before council for approval at this time. The Albany Police Department's Public Safety Dispatch Center provides emergency police, fire, and medical response communication services to the City of Albany and serves as the public safety answering point, it's a mouthful, for both the City of Albany and the community of Kensington. Dispatch Center personnel also staff a public service counter that never closes and non-emergency phone and radio traffic for police, fire, and ambulance services. Full staffing of the Dispatch Center consists of seven dispatchers working 10-hour shifts, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The city is projecting three of those seven Dispatch Center positions to be vacant at the end of the year. We have taken the necessary steps to create a new recruitment to fill the anticipated vacancies. However, the hiring and training of dispatch personnel takes approximately eight to 12 months. In consideration of these circumstances, the Albany Police Department has identified a critical need for public safety dispatch personnel and requests to hereby pursue a temporary employment agreement with our very own Darla Majors for a term not to exceed six months. Ms. Majors possesses the specialized skills necessary to perform work of a limited duration in maintaining vital public safety services in the face of these unusual staffing circumstances. The appointment will be limited to 960 hours and will be from January 1st to June 30 of 2018. Thank you for your consideration, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from council? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for final comments. I'll accept a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Pull the council?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Hey, item 7-, or excuse me, 11-2, Adams Street and Canes Avenue Traffic Calming and Bike Way Study. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, mayor and council members. The action before the City Council this evening is to receive a presentation of the Canes and Adams Traffic Calming and Bike Way Study. By way of background, in April of 2012, the city adopted the Albany Active Transportation Plan, which is in effect our bicycle master plan and pedestrian master plan. During the adoption of the ATP, the Active Transportation Plan, the council at that time decided that more analysis and public engagement was necessary to evaluate the feasibility of using Canes and Adams Streets as alternatives to bicycling on San Pablo Avenue. San Pablo Avenue, as you know, is a challenging roadway, particularly for bicyclists. Currently, many bicyclists ride on sidewalks, ride on Canes and Adams against one-way traffic or detour out of their way to calmer streets in order to avoid bicycling in the lanes on San Pablo. In January of 2017, the city accepted a grant from the Alameda County Transportation Commission to fund this study, and through a committed process, selected Perici Transportation Consulting to work on it. Our consultants will make a brief presentation in a few moments, including describing the public meetings, but we've had a series over the last few months, and I wanted to summarize just briefly some of the things that we heard from residents. There was quite a bit of feedback from residents expressing concerns about vehicle speeds and cut-through traffic, as well as concerns about the safety of implementing bikeways along Canes and Adams. We also heard from bicyclists who recognized that, who are looking for an alternative to San Pablo Avenue, and also recognize that this is a link in a regional network that we would like to be able to find a solution to. In general, residents expressed a desire to keep stop signs at the existing intersections, supported speed humps or speed cushions, and were concerned about the loss of street parking. Many residents also expressed concern about two-way traffic. Following public comments, the Traffic and Safety Commission in October voted unanimously to recommend to proceed with implementation of a two-way traffic alternative with traffic diversion barriers on Canes and Adams Street. Again, our consultant will show you what that looks like in a moment. In addition, the commission suggested amending street parallel parking requirements to allow parking in either direction on Canes and Adams. Following the commission meeting, we received a question about the city's authority under state law to change those regulations, which are, and the vehicle preliminary analysis is that the public comment is correct, and that if the City Council wishes us to further consider this, we will need to do some research on how to best address those kinds of parking arrangements. Finally, I also wanted to mention something that didn't get a lot of mention in the report, but to talk a little bit about the public safety considerations of the proposal. The elements of the project that's been proposed that slows down normal vehicle traffic will also have the same effect on emergency vehicles. In addition, in some cases, traffic calming measures can create, at least temporarily, confusion for motorists that may require additional parking and/or traffic enforcement on the part of our police department. I wanted to let you know that the city's transportation and planning staff have consulted with the police and fire departments on this report, and have learned that they do prefer one-way streets, and they do prefer wider streets. This simply allows them to move more quickly and maneuver more easily in the case of an emergency. Both departments, however, have no objections with the project moving forward into a design phase, where we would go into the details of exactly how these would be implemented. We would go into the details with council, if we received council direction to do so. We could go into the details of exactly where bollards or planters or other things would be placed, and to, as is our normal practice, we field test these placements with fire appar, the largest city fire apparatus, to make sure that they can maneuver properly. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew Lee with Perici to provide a brief presentation. And Aleida, Andino Chavez, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have as well.
All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Brief introduction, my name is Andrew Lee. I am a senior transportation engineer with Perici Transportation Consulting. We are a local business, we have an office nearby in Berkeley, and we have been working with city staff over the past six months very diligently on this project. When it first started out, it was solely a bike way study to look at options that could provide two-way bicycle travel on Adams Street and Canes Avenue, and quickly it morphed into a traffic calming study as well, in the process of discovery and talking to the residents. As a quick means of orientation, as Jeff mentioned, this Adams Street and Canes Avenue couplet has been identified as a gap in the city and regional bike way network. There are existing bike lanes on Carlson Boulevard in the City of El Cerrito, and it's not part of this proposal, but it was mentioned in the ATP that there is a proposed connection to Carlson via a new bridge over the existing creek there. Also, to the north, on the cane side of things, there is the El Cerrito Plaza Bart Station, also a very highly trafficked area and a desired location for people traveling by foot and by bicycle. And to the south, there is the connection to the City of Berkeley. So since we've kicked off this project, we have gone to the public four times. We had an initial kickoff meeting to listen to the community's concerns, to hear some of the issues that they're dealing with on these streets, what they liked and what they didn't like. We confirmed and observed some of these conditions in a walk audit a week ago, or excuse me, a week later. And then after several months of research and testing and drawing out concepts, we went to the community again to review some of the toolkit of improvements that we had developed for traffic calming and also for the bike way improvements. Then last October 26th, the Traffic and Safety Commission reviewed our findings, our toolkit of recommendations, and reached a unanimous recommendation for the two-way bike way facility, and I'll cover that briefly. Before I get to that, though, when we did go to the Traffic and Safety Commission, we presented three concepts. The first one was actually just to address the traffic issues observed and mentioned by the members of the community, and those issues were related to primarily speeding on the traffic corridor, that the street, although it's 30 feet wide, it feels very narrow because of the density of parking and the density of uses along the corridor, and that even if traffic is not necessarily going above the speed limit, even traveling 25 miles an hour when it's very congested and very narrow, can feel very unsafe for the community. So that was our first concept. The second concept was to provide a bike lane only in the opposite direction of the prevailing direction of traffic, and so in that condition, if you were on Adams Street, a contra-flow bike lane would allow for southbound bicycle traffic, and if you're on Canes Avenue, the bike way, the counter-flow bike lane would allow for northbound bicycle traffic only, but not vehicular traffic. And then concept three was traffic calming concept with two-way traffic, and this is what we refer to sometimes as a bicycle boulevard, and I will go through the details of this. But in short, just as a summary, there would be partial barriers at the intersection, so the prevailing direction of traffic under a two-way bicycle facility concept would predominantly allow for traffic to enter in the direction that residents are accustomed to now, which is on Adams Street, most traffic would be entering going northbound, and most traffic on Canes Avenue would be entering southbound. There would be these barriers to prevent traffic from going northbound, entering the street northbound on Canes, and from entering the street going southbound on Adams. The recommendation per the Traffic and Safety Commission also included no changes to the existing stop sign arrangement, no traffic circles, and as mentioned before, that with two-way traffic on Canes and Adams, but the predominant direction of traffic being in the existing direction, that the on-street parking regulations would allow for people to be parking on the left side, even though there is technically two-way traffic allowed. And then furthermore, consideration of edge lines, so there was a recommendation to stripe out parking Ts. There is concern about the loss of parking as designed with the Ts for greater spacing, and so this provides the neighborhood greater flexibility on how cars manage to fit with each other. If there's two small cars, maybe they could share a space that would otherwise be marked for one large car. And furthermore, consideration of speed cushions as a additional traffic calming measure if issues related to speed continue to be observed on those streets. A brief cross-section of what the two-way street would look like, so Canes and Adams are both largely 30 feet wide, and there is parking on both sides of the street, and under the shared two-way configuration, cars would be allowed to travel in either direction, but there is, I'll expand on this later, and then bicycles would also be allowed to travel in either direction. travel in either direction. Partial traffic closure is just an illustration. This is an installation in Berkeley where the car coming at you is with the prevailing direction of traffic, and these barriers prevent cars desiring to go in the opposite direction from entering the block. A two-way street is also a traffic calming feature in that two-way traffic on a narrow street can slow traffic and calm some of these speeds that are observed along the corridor. And then some of the recommendations that were placed under consideration include speed cushions, which serve to calm traffic especially for maximum speeds. If somebody is roaring down the block, speed cushions have the ability to slow traffic down so that they don't damage the vehicle, and then also lane narrowing, which would be striping out the right edges of the street. And then one comment that we heard over and over again was that the existing configuration of Cane's and Adams was preferred by the community for a large reason, which was to prevent cut-through traffic on, from San Pablo Avenue from diverting onto these parallel streets. And so, Cane's is southbound on the east side of San Pablo, which prevents somebody traveling northbound on San Pablo from taking a quick right and going up Cane's as a way of diverting traffic. And same thing with Adams: It prevents somebody going southbound on San Pablo from taking a quick right and then diverting southbound in order to bypass traffic. With the diverters, and using Adams Street as an example, what would happen is that traffic would continue to predominantly travel in the northbound direction, and that the only traffic that could travel in the southbound direction would be those that entered going northbound and either made a U-turn, or say, pulled into a driveway, and then made a three-point turn in order to get into the opposite direction. So the net increase in traffic is negligible with two-way traffic circulation. The only contraflow traffic that would occur would be primarily people who are already on the block and either want to turn around or are just making an exiting movement from the block. I'll note one more thing, which is the conditions on Cane's and Adams are special in that there's a lot of density on these corridors with the amount of parking and with the amount of uses, but it is far from typical as a cross-section for many other streets in the city of Albany. This is a map that we created, looking at the cross-sectional widths of all the streets in the city, and you can see that there are many other corridors in the city that are also 30 feet wide and that are able to accommodate two-way traffic. So just as means of a recap, again, the Traffic and Safety Commission's recommendation was for a two-way bikeway alternative for Cane's and Adams with partial barriers, no changes to the stop signs, no traffic circles, modification of the parking, and then consideration of further traffic calming measures as needed. I'll also note that their recommendations are very easy to reverse, in that it is not proposing any curb changes, hardscape changes, it is merely putting in barriers that could be removed, and some signage. With that, we are able to receive questions.
Other questions from council?
So, can you explain some of the thinking about allowing parking in either direction, or this idea that you could park on the left-hand side of the street? Why would you want to do that if somebody could do a three-point turn and park going the other way?
The thinking on accommodating left-side parking is that most residents right now park on the left side, and it would be somewhat onerous to make it a requirement to have somebody do the three-point turn and park on the right side. And so we want to be as accommodating to residents as much as possible. And with regard to safety concerns with parking on the left side, we do recognize that drivers would be on the opposite side of the vehicle as they're typically positioned, and so they would be looking across the vehicle at oncoming traffic. But the movements going from a parked vehicle and pulling into the direction of traffic is relatively slow speed, and so we think that the issues related to parking on the left side is marginal concern at most.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions for you?
At this point.
Michael, do you have questions? Ms. Mayor Pilch?
The emergency vehicle considerations that you brought tonight, Jeff, is this the first time these are being brought to the, these public forums?
Yes.
Okay. And so Traffic and Safety has not had a chance to consider those considerations?
For this particular study, those are familiar issues that we work with on a regular basis with our police and fire departments, but for this particular study, yes, this is the first time.
Okay, and is there a reason why Traffic and Safety didn't have those to consider?
Frankly, it was our judgment at staff level, mine ultimately, that we thought we had a good handle on what police and fire department requirements are. There was some informal consultation with the police department a month or two ago, but following some questions that we received after the Traffic and Safety Commission, we went into it with a little bit more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
Actually, can I ask a quick follow-up question? There are plans ultimately to put a bridge across the creek at the far north end of Adams Street where the School of the Blind is, that's state property. Has either TNS or the city ever talked to someone at the school as to whether or not they would like to have a bridge across their property there?
I'm not aware. Alada, do you have information on that?
Good evening, members of the council. About maybe seven years ago, when we were, before we were developing the ATP, we talked about this, and they raised concerns about the bridge at that point. They said that we, the concern is that we had vision impaired people, and then cyclists will be using the same right-of-way, so that's the concern we had. After that, we haven't really addressed them, addressed the issue with them.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Well, I have a lot of questions. Starting with, how long would it take to implement change if we were to do a change?
A change in?
If we were to put in the Traffic and Safety recommendation, if we were to change it to two-way streets, does it happen next week? Is it?
It takes a while. This is, what's before you this evening is, strictly speaking, accepting this report as being complete. The normal sequence would be incorporating a recommendation, whatever action you take tonight, into the active transportation plan. This is a document that we, from time to time, update. Our general plan recommends looking and updating that report sometime in the next few years. There's also the issue of designing in detail how each of these intersections would work. It's not a major, as Andrew said, this isn't a major construction project, but still there needs to be detailed design. And then finally, there would be, need to be funding set aside in our capital improvement project budget to implement. So it's at least a few years. If you decided this was your highest priority, it would still be a few years before it actually gets in the ground.
And then how does that timeframe fit in with the bridge timeframe, which doesn't seem to have even started, and now I'm hearing that landowners weren't even excited about it? It seems to push that project further back. Is there, do these two things come together at some point?
The bridge is a far more complex project. It does involve the state agencies as well as the city of El Cerrito, and although I think the city of El Cerrito shares the vision of having some sort of crossing there, it's still complicated. It's also a environmentally sensitive waterway, so there's a lot of design and consultation with various regulatory agencies that we have to go through, so that has an even longer process, I'm afraid, and a more expensive project.
Okay. Are there any other connection points that we need to be thinking about at this point, as far as making the regional bikeway?
For a bicycle, we've talked about some foot connection points further downstream, but for bicycles, I think this is, Alada, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's another good opportunity here, northbound.
No, it would be, there would be still a gap by the Cerrito Creek that we'll have to start working on some kind of alternative, or maybe a cycle track along San Pablo Avenue, but we haven't looked at that right now, because that area, although it's in the plan, we really need to discuss it with the center for, the regional center for the blind in the state of California.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is on Cane's at the intersections of Solano and Marin. It's, now it's difficult, especially at Marin, to get across or to turn left, and so I'm sort of envisioning a driver waiting to turn and the traffic lining up behind them, so I'm thinking that perhaps that should be a right turn only. The problem with that is it's very difficult to get across Marin to get into the left turn lane, to turn left on San Pablo, and should you accomplish that feat, then you have to go all the way to Gilman before you can get, turn left again, because now you can't turn left at Dartmouth. So if you're trying to get to the, if you're trying to go to Amy's house, for example, from Cane's, you would have to go all the way to Gilman and come back. So, did anybody think about that? If you were on the corner of Marin and Cane's, and if we made it a right turn so that the traffic would continue to move there and not queue-
Going south.
Going south, you have to go south. You couldn't cross, if you had to turn right and not cross Marin, you'd have to go all the way around. My question is, did anybody think about these, where it already queues up a bit at that corner anyway, would it be a bigger problem?
I think you've identified a particular intersection that would be more, both those intersections would be particularly complex. We were looking at this at a little higher level. I don't know if Andrew or Alada want to answer it in a little bit more detail.
Sure, and hate to sort of punt on this, but the recommendations are not inclusive of any circulation changes, whether it be prohibitions on select turn movements, so I think you're justified in identifying the intersection as needing more work, but it's not one of the core issues related to the bikeway recommendations, per se.
But it's a core issue, I think, to traffic flow in general.
Absolutely.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So this would be, I would say, at a planning level, I think identifying this as an issue, and then at the design level, we would try to figure out a way to make it work without affecting vehicle circulation. If it does affect vehicle circulation, then that would be part of the decision-making process in the design phase.
Okay. Can I see you, and I'm going to have you wait till public comment. So, I have heard discussion about, instead of using Cane's, why we can't use Stanage as the alternative, it's already a two-way street, making that, and I'm just curious as to why that's a bad idea.
Well, San Pablo Avenue is a direct connection to El Cerrito Plaza, as is Stanage, I understand, but San Pablo is also a trip destination and origin, and it's a major commercial corridor, and so it's part of the desire to provide access to people on foot, on bike, on car, with the most direct access to San Pablo as could be provided.
And Stanage does not go to the plaza. Stanage is the one street that dead-ends before the plaza.
Okay.
Sorry, stand corrected.
But is, sometimes also think of cyclists as pedestrians as well, because as pedestrians, we try to get the closest access point or shortcuts. Bicycles are the same, it's using muscle power, and sometimes a deviation takes a lot of effort on the part of the cyclist. That's basically just one of, another, is accessibility as well.
Okay. Or still in question phase. Is it possible to do a pilot program, to do either one or the other, or a block, or something that-
Yes.
Okay. And I'm curious about this, and I think I'd like to comment, probably to come from the public, is to, if most residents park on the street, or if they park in their driveways or whatever, I'd be just curious to know that. What's the budget for this project?
The, well, there's no budget, no approved budget for it right now. It would be incorporated into a future capital improvement project. Our guess, and that's really all it is, because we really haven't designed it, and we haven't thought through all the issues that you've, some of which you've already raised, would probably be in the neighborhood of $300,000. That includes a lot of design work, more community engagement, the actual physical bollards, planters, the cost could range depending on how elaborate you want to get, if they're landscaped and irrigated, that can, gets surprisingly expensive very quickly. If you use the ones that they use in Berkeley, they're not very attractive, but they're cheaper. So it's really a guess, but it would be in that order of magnitude.
So that's both design and construction?
An overall project budget, in today's dollars, yeah.
And then I guess my last question is, again, kind of a, did you think about the traffic that's going east and west on the east and west streets, for example, Washington, just as an example? If you're driving and you look to the, whichever way you look, I'm sorry, and you see the bollards, you see the barriers, it says do not enter, it says one-way, you think it's a one-way street, and all of a sudden there's a car or a bike coming the other way, did you think about how that would impact the drivers? I mean, and I understand people get used to it, but some people are just driving through once, you know, so how does that piece work?
I'll take a shot at an answer, and Andrew can fill in. I think this was the observation that the police department made, that it can be a little bit confusing. These are becoming more and more common, there are a number of these in Berkeley and other cities now, so hopefully motorists are getting used to this as a possible type of traffic control, but perhaps Andrew wants to add to that.
I'll add that the existing configuration of these streets being one-way is, at times, inconsistent, and we've heard from the community that confusion is already arising for drivers not familiar with the area as, under the existing configuration, and so it was our professional judgment that with the bollards, it would actually provide additional reinforcement to not turn the wrong way onto these streets.
That's not my concern. My concern is the driver that sees the bollards, realizes it's a one-way street, crosses the intersection, and somebody's coming from the other direction where there are no bollards, either a bicycle that you may not see if you just look real quickly, or another car, because you're in, your mindset is, oh, this is a one-way street, I'll look, I don't see anybody, I'll go, and there's a bicycle legally going through the intersection. And that would be my concern, that that could be a real problem.
So the existing configuration of stop signs is on Cane's and Adams, and it is incumbent on the people crossing the side streets to cross in a safe manner, and so it is, again, it's incumbent on the people crossing against uncontrolled traffic to do so safely.
Yeah, kind of a follow-up to Peggy's question. Could you mitigate some of this confusion with just signage?
Absolutely.
You know, or some kind of pavement difference coloration that indicated something different was happening, you know, on either Adams or Cane's?
Yeah, it's a frequent installation to put in additional signs that say do not enter, except bicycles, to put in one-way only signs, and add the reinforcement of but, except bicycles, or put in pavement markings such as green dashing to indicate that there is people on bike crossing the street, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, it strikes me, if we're going to go to public comment soon, that maybe we want to hear, if it's possible, a summary of why the other designs were passed over. For example, the, I think there was one design where there was going to be just a bike lane, contraflow bike lane. Can you just somewhat briefly describe why this design was chosen over the others?
Sure. So, the reasoning for the contraflow bike lane, actually, I have a diagram, I think I can pull up. So this is what the contraflow bike lane would look like on a cross-sectional basis, and you'll notice that the bicyclists- and you'll notice that the bicyclists, per the striping, would be oriented within a five-and-a-half-foot zone next to parked cars, whereas with the two-way shared street, they have a full eight-feet width to maneuver, and so they can pull over to the right as necessary to avoid oncoming traffic. And it was our opinion that with the contraflow bike lane and being a bit more restrictive to the bicycle traffic, that it subjected cyclists to a little bit more exposure to traffic when parked to the street, parked curbside.
So it was a question of the door zone, of getting, yeah?
Yes.
And the lane being close to the doors and being in the door zone?
That's right.
Okay, are we done for now? Okay. Before we open public comment, I'd, can I just see a real quick show of hands of how many are going to speak? Great. I've been, we're going to have two minutes, minutes each, you will all have an opportunity to speak, but I do want to remind you of the rules of decorum. Please be respectful of each speaker, address the council, not the audience, and please no applause or any negative comments or noise. We want everyone to feel comfortable speaking, and we don't want anyone to be intimidated by audience reactions.
Mayor, can I make just one additional comment? I have really tried, on this issue, as an avid bicyclist, to consider all viewpoints, and I have watched the comments from, I believe it was the November 28th Traffic and Safety meeting, twice. And I just want to let you know that this might be an issue that we consider in future years, maybe more than once. And any of the comments, you know, the yelling, the shouting that comes from the audience is lost to the historical record, because I'm sitting there watching this, and I can understand what someone says at the dius, if they've got the microphone up by their mouth, but all those comments were from the audience, I can't hear them. And the reality is, although we take notes and, you know, we approve the, the notes from the meetings, the real historical record is the videotape. So if you want your thoughts and comments to be preserved for the historical record for the next time we review this issue, you have to be there and not shouting from the audience. Also, you know, I don't really care if you guys are rude to us, they pay us $300 a month, our skins get pretty thick. But there was one example in particular where someone at this dius, who listened patiently to everyone else, was shouted down by the audience. That is really low-class, and I will remember who shouts them down. Take my word for it, it's in your self-interest to be polite tonight, I'm just letting you know.
We will call you up by threes, if you could come up in lineups, we want to move this through as quickly as we can, so everyone has an opportunity to speak. So the first three, please.
And if you haven't filled out speaker card, if you can bring one up as you come up to the podium. David Hertzler, Ken, last name is R, start with R, and Peter Dolman.
Good evening, council members, I have the honor of being the first, first one up. I'm David Hertzler, I own an eight-unit apartment building on the 900 block of Canes. I oppose converting Canes to a two-way vehicle and bike boulevard. My primary concern is the safety of bike riders and autos. Canes is a very busy street, as you know. My building has five parking spaces, and each backs into Canes. On Saturday, I counted the number of driveways on the 900 block of Canes that back into Canes, and there are 70 of those just in that one block. Most drivers have visibility problems backing out of, backing into Canes. I think it's dangerous, and making Canes into two-way will increase the danger 100% because now you have two ways to look. Also, as mentioned before, Canes is 30 feet wide, same as a number of other streets. I think driving these 30-foot-wide streets in Albany is unpleasant and dangerous, especially if a truck is parked on one side or is coming toward you. Also, some drivers tend to drive down the center of the street, and then you have to stop and pull over. I don't think we need another dangerous street in Albany. I prefer Canes the way it is, adding one or two speed bumps is fine to slow down traffic, but that's always needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ken Rogar, I live on Clay Street, 1,000 block, right by the bowling alley there? Oh, I'm sorry, I live by, on Clay Street, right by the bowling alley, that 1,000 block, and I work on 7th and Gilman, so, and I often commute by bicycle. And so this is, that's my way to go to work, generally I, I contraflow, as the plan was, but, you know, legally on Adams Street. And, you know, I, I thought about that as I drive to work, that if you had a contraflow bike lane, you know, for the bikes only, that would work really well, you know, opposed to making the whole thing two lanes. And I've been doing that for over 10 years, riding back and forth that way. The only people seem to disapprove of it are the police. Thank you.
And you want to close three more?
Yeah, the next three is Maureen Kay, Clay Larson, and Brian Martin.
Good evening, my name is Peter Dolman, I live on, in the 600 block of Adams Street. I oppose making these two-way streets. I, there are maybe half a dozen bicyclists who go the right way on Adams Street now, where there's, to which there is no legal impediment. This is a, an expensive and serious change for not much benefit. Bicycles do go the wrong way on Adams Street, and nobody seems to care much, so they already have that. This would take out some parking spots, we are, we share with the commercial district, and we're sorely hurting for parking. I think there's a safety hazard, that bicyclists going the wrong way now, at least are very careful, because they're not supposed to be. I assume that these barriers would have stop signs for the bicyclists going against the car traffic, and I hope they'd follow, they'd obey them better than they obey stop signs at other places, but I can see motorists being surprised by motor, by bicycles zooming out through the barriers, motorists on the cross streets. And I'm concerned that there would be, that the wrong-way car traffic would be less enforceable. A one-way street, if a car is going the wrong way, it's pretty, pretty clear to a law officer. If somebody sneaks through the barrier, he's legal unless he's seen sneaking through the barrier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Camilla, I'm an Albany resident, I live on Adams Street. Thank you for serving on the city council, I realize that serving on councils is a lot of work, so thank you very much. For providing southbound bicyclists a route parallel to San Pablo, I respectfully oppose all the Parisi revisions. The revisions are extremely expensive, I view them as traffic snarling, not traffic calming, due to complex parking plans, additional barriers, occasionally inebriated drivers navigating Adams Street from nearby bars. And there, I, I view them as having unnecessarily elaborate arrangements to prevent traffic from San Pablo coming down Adams. The revisions also remove needed parking spaces for residents, their guests, and employees who work on San, the nearby companies. And I respectfully suggest that bike lanes just be painted on Adams Street, and then stair-step bicyclics over to Madison, and from Madison to go to Jackson for southbound bicyclists. I have a map, I'll give you folks, and my plan is cheap, and it's a segregated marked bicycle lane, does not require changing existing traffic patterns, and it does not require elaborate measures to prevent traffic from San Pablo jumping onto Adams Street. For providing northbound bicyclists a route parallel to San Pablo, I suggest using Stanage.
Thank you. Thank you.
Clay Larson, Albany resident, just, just so it's not lost to anybody, I think what Jeff said was that, that the city does not have the authority to, to write an ordinance that contravenes state law regarding parking. So I, I think my first recommendation is, since, since the, since the discussion about traffic and safety was kind of polluted by misinformation provided in the consultant's report, and they, and they can't meet the conditions of approval that they described, that this whole thing be returned to them for, for another go-around, another review, and perhaps with some information from the city with regards to, I think, paraphrasing Jeff, how, how they handle this situation. My second recommendation would be that we, we now separate Canes and Adams. Adams Streets is, is maybe four blocks long, if you look at the city of Basco Mac, it's two blocks long, and it goes nowhere, it's a, it's a road to nowhere. If, and it doesn't sound very good right now, but if a bridge, and I think it'd be a nice amenity, was built across Cerito Creek, it would become a real thoroughfare. People want to go to Richmond for some reason, this would be, this would be an obvious choice. My third recommendation, or my third comment, I think, is, is that one often compares some, I think it's Bicycle Route 4, it's like the Alcan Highway, and we have this gap, actually I looked at it, and there are other gaps. But I, I noticed in looking at it, no city provides alternate, take your choice, bicycle routes, one block away on either side of San Pablo. So, so we're being very gracious. I, I think, I think the bike route on Canes, if that's approved, and we're one, one or two blocks up, would be sufficient. So I, I actually don't think there's any need for bicycle routes, but I, I certainly think we should consider Adams Street separately, it's going nowhere, it, it's not going to be a functional, not going to add anything to the, to bicycle through.
Next three, Peter Campbell, Julia Sigwart, and Johanna.
Hi, my name's Brian Martin, I live on the 600 block of Adams Street. I'm in favor of the city's proposal and its minimal impact on parking, and the removal of, hopefully significant bike traffic from San Pablo, where I think it's unsafe for the bicyclists, and whereas I, as a driver, am always having to go around people, and I, I think that's unsafe. My kids ride bikes, my younger daughter across town to friends' houses and to the chocolate shop up Solano, our older daughter to music lessons near Dwight and San Pablo, all the way down in Berkeley, way down there, and all over town on the Albany High School mountain biking team as they get to and from their practice locations. I look forward to them having a bicycle boulevard at our front step, which ties into regional plans and the benefits that other commuters, bicycle commuters have, and for that bicycle boulevard to show up on Google bicycle maps to, as a, as a thoroughfare. As, with all the wrong-way tra, also, with all the wrong-way traffic I already see on our street, it's, it's, sometimes feels like we're already a, a two-way street. With the proposed barriers, I hope spillover from San Pablo will be greatly reduced, and confused drivers will be greatly reduced going, and I know a recent city study showed speeding was not a serious problem, but I approve of traffic calming measures here, including allowing two-way traffic, which I know for me certainly causes me to drive slower when approaching cars coming. Opposite-direction parking, as is done in, people seem to be doing already in Berkeley, I don't know what the rules are for that, but is important to me because the street is too narrow for U-turns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Campbell, I own a four-unit building on the 900 block of Canes, I don't live there, so I don't have continuous knowledge of what goes on traffic-wise there. But my, I, I do go there periodically, and my impression is the road really is too narrow for two-way traffic, particularly if there are bicycles along there, I think it needs to stay as a one-way direction street, and figure out any bicycle use along there. Couple of comments about bicycles, it seems like bicyclists predominantly, not everybody, but predominantly bicyclists do what they want to do, regardless of what the rules are. I was driving down San Pablo the other day, going down to the shopping center on Monroe Street there, and I know you had a, a nice paved path for bicycles to go there, and you have traffic signals that tell bicycles to stop and not turn, and whatever they tell them to do. So I was going down there, my light was green, I was going to turn right into the, on Monroe. The bicyclist was coming down there, I knew he wasn't going to stop, even though he had a red sign there on the bicycle stop, bicycle line. So as we got close together, and I was about to turn right, and he zipped across in front of me, I honked my horn at him, and of course I got the middle finger salute. So I don't know what you do about that, probably you can't do anything. But I think the main thing is, the streets are just too narrow, Albany's streets are narrow. And this is kind of off-topic, but I think Albany should have more one-way streets, more than converting these back to two-way streets. The, particularly, one, one that particularly comes to mind is the, is Carmel right by Memorial Park, there are kids playing there all day long, and it's a very narrow street, the traffic is very difficult to get past there, and I think it's a hazard having even that street two-way. So thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Julia Sigwart, I live in the 700 block of Adams, and I commute every day by bicycle, I'm an avid cyclist, so I support things that are good for bicycles, and I absolutely oppose two-way traffic on Adams. I think that it would contribute to confusion, and it would not give any particular benefit to bicyclists. As we've talked about already in this meeting, as the mayor raised, an important salient point, the bridge, there isn't even a plan to make this bridge, and that bridge is intrinsic to the idea of at least Adams Street contributing to some kind of bike thoroughfare that links our multiple cities. Without that, the, the, the idea of a bicycle boulevard on Adams is pointless. In our comments in the Traffic Commission meeting, we, I and many of my neighbors commented that if such changes are needed, then the alternative with a contraflow bike lane seemed to satisfy everybody's needs, including the need for the, the traffic master plan, bikes, cars, and our desire as residents to maintain our one-way street and our nice atmosphere without ugly bollards at the end of every block. But our comments were not reflected in the recommendation that was made to council. I think that it was reflected in the various recommendations that were made by the consultants, and I really respect that, and I hope that you will listen to the plurality of opinion here from many of us local residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next three is Stephanie Kay, Ed Fields, and Griffin Neal.
Hi, I'm Jo, and I live on Adams Street. Thank you for hearing us, and the, the questions that are being asked and the comments are of such a different caliber, frankly, from October, the October meeting, thank you. I, there are so many issues, but, but I, I just kept thinking over and over again, why can't we have one lane, one bike lane on Adams if we want to go there, and then another bike lane on Canes, whichever direction is appropriate? But why do we have to have two-way bike lanes when, on each street? It just seemed like so Byzantine, all these additional features that would be required in order to accommodate that. I live on Adams, and I would say that the number of times cars have come down the wrong direction down my block in the last seven years is maybe three, and they usually come down, sometimes at night, sometimes during the day, and you can just sort of step out and wave, and people usually laugh and do a turnabout. I have, for 25 years, parked on the west side of Adams in front of my home, northbound, of course, and the thought of all the heavy panel trucks and vans and SUVs we have on our street, parking behind these guys, we all, you know, use the parallel parking, all those precious spaces, I just can't imagine having to, to pull out northbound on Adams to, 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 to not clip a cyclist, or, or someone's going to get clipped, or some car's going to come really fast, who's done a, you know, pulled out of the driveway, and they're gonna, they're gonna head south on Adams, I just, those, those potentials were just, it just, it just felt so congested and claustrophobic. Anyway, thank you for considering our points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Kelman. I'm on the 700 block of Adams, and I want to strongly oppose two-way traffic on the street for really the reasons that have already been mentioned. But I also want to say that I think, and it's not a scientific study, that people park both in their driveways and on the street because most people have two cars, and it is so tight, and you can barely, I've been asked not to park so close to someone's driveway because they can't even get in or out of their driveway if we try to fit everybody on the street. And the thing that makes our street different than a lot of other streets that are very narrow in Albany is that we have so many bars and restaurants around, and so many people from out of the area come up and down our street, and I think, come up our street, and it would be very confusing to have the barriers, and people are already pretty inebriated when they drive down our street. So I don't look forward to any more confusion in our neighborhood, and not to mention that I've lived there for a long time, and I love the neighborhood, and it would be really unsightly to have to put up barriers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ed Fields on the 600 block of Canes. I hope by now you're convinced that council members, that whatever recommendation you make, it should go back to traffic and safety for additional study of all of these issues, the parking, the emergency vehicles concern, et cetera. I think a couple of things are clear. Neighbors on the streets don't want their streets to be through two-way streets. That's clear. Many of them don't even want them to be internal two-way streets. I was willing to accept the proposal from Traffic and Safety because it seemed to address concerns of both neighbors and bicyclists. Some of us are both. But I was in favor of a contra-flow bike lane. I wish you could stare at that for a few minutes instead of this one. I think it was just up for a few seconds, if it was up at all. If you were to do this two-way internal street, you have to remove the one-way arrows. I mean, you can say one-way, you can say one-way except bicycles, but I think in order to legally have a two-way bike street, you can't have it be a one-way car street unless you have a contra-flow bike lane and actually paint it, and I wish I could tap this thing and get that up there so you could look at it. If you were to go ahead with the plan that was recommended with Traffic and Safety, you take down the one-way signs, you have to put up the barriers. A lot of us not sure we want the barriers or not, because otherwise it becomes a through two-way street the minute you call it a two-way street. You know, it's supposed to be a two-way street with half barriers. You can't do part and not do the other part. The other thing that maybe partially addresses Peggy's concern, which I think was a very good concern, Peggy, about confused motorists, is we don't want to remove the stop signs on Canes and Adams. The neighbors are pretty vehement about that. It makes it a very fast car route. But we should put stop signs on the east-west cross streets. We should add them. That adds safety for the cyclists, because the cars are meant to stop. The bicyclists unfortunately often don't stop, and I think that's a very important point. So hopefully, this will have your thoughts and recommendation, and go back for more detailed study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three is Tanisha Neal, Lubov Mazur, and Harry Chomsky.
Hi, my name's Griffin Neal, and I'm pro for this decision. So Saturday, my friend, he actually got, ran off, like, a car ran him off the street, and he crashed. So he lives on Canes, Adams, I'm sorry, and so what he could have done is, he could have, if there was a bike path, he could have just gone down Canes, but instead he had to go to Key Route, because his mom thought it was safe. That's when he got ran off. If given a bike path down Adams, I think he would have avoided crashing, and now be able to, and would be able to use his hand and not have a black eye. So that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tanisha Neal. I am a 15-year Albany resident. I currently live on San Pablo with a window that faces San Pablo, so I can hear outside my window. Sometimes there's collisions, sometimes there's near misses and honking, and between cars and cyclists. And I have never seen in any of these collisions, or near misses, or almost being doored, I've never seen the police get called. So it's not something that's actually reported or documented, because usually the people on their bikes are so worried about just getting to their next destination that they just get up, they brush themselves off, and then they just keep going. With that, with those experiences, my son is not allowed to ride his bike on San Pablo. He cycles every single day, and he is absolutely not allowed to ride on San Pablo without me unless he's on the sidewalk. So what he does is he has to go to the Aloney Greenway because it is a bike path, and after what happened to his friend, now I'm worried that it's dangerous for him to just get to and access the bike path. I definitely think, or I know that he would use Canes and Adams bicycle paths, and just knowing that there were specifically designated areas to keep he and his friends safe would make a huge difference, and hopefully would get the teenagers off their phones and out on bikes and enjoy the amenities that the community has to offer. I think by adding bike lanes on Canes and Adams, it's not just a safety issue, but it would also, it's an environmental issue, and would also promote better public health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lubov Mazur, are we stating our seniority? I've lived here 46 years, and I'm the fourth generation in my house.
I remember when you moved in.
I know.
And a former member of Traffic and Safety.
So the alternative to the perceived hazards of Adams and Canes is San Pablo Avenue, and with a budget of $300,000 estimated, that's about a hospital stay, short stay. They're safer. There are better routes. And I know that Adams at this time is discontinuous, but there was a time when the Buchanan Street bike path was discontinuous through the Department of Agriculture, and now there's a beautiful path there. So one day, there may be a bridge. A chain is forged one link at a time, and we have to take the opportunity to forge these links when we can. So I would hope that you would consider these recommendations from the Traffic and Safety Commission.
Next three, Jo Schwartz, Francesco Papalia, and Anne Duncan.
Good evening, council. I'm Harry Chomsky of the Traffic and Safety Commission. I want to thank you for considering the commission's recommendation tonight, and I wanted to try to explain what was going on in our heads when we made the recommendation we did, in case it isn't clear yet. We heard from a lot of people that night who were very unhappy with their quality of life living on Canes and Adams Streets, and I think we really would have liked to do something to help them, some kind of traffic calming, something that the consultants recommended. Unfortunately, there wasn't much consensus from the community about what traffic calming measures they wanted. The only one that seemed to get some kind of consensus was speed cushions, and that's why we included it in our recommendation. Since we couldn't really solve the problem of drunk drivers and everything else that people were complaining about, we focused on the problem that we could solve, which was providing bike access along the San Pablo corridor, making up for the complete absence of bike facilities in the, otherwise, in the San Pablo Complete Streets Plan. So to try to create something resembling a complete street, we recommended the internal two-way traffic. We did not want to do anything that would harm the quality of life further for the residents. As far as I could tell, the residents do not like the idea of internal two-way traffic, but also, as far as I can tell, it wouldn't actually make these problems that people have worse. So I would urge the council to consider the specific complaints that the residents have, and think about whether those complaints are just the nature of living on those streets close to a busy street, or whether somehow what the commission recommended would really make that worse, and if so, what can we do to mitigate that? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to have this graphic up because when the, the last time I spoke, it's not seen on the recording, because it's on me and not on that, but everyone can see. So I am a cyclist. I'm 66 years old. I never drive on, ride on San Pablo Avenue because it's dangerous. It's hazardous. And can you imagine coming here tonight on San Pablo Avenue, trying to navigate here on a bicycle, coming home from work during these dark hours? We need to close the gap. We have a regional responsibility as part of the East Bay to create a continuous line where people can navigate north, south, and east and west. You can see from this graphic that Washington and Marin are major east-west corridors for cyclists. But they, one goes somewhere out to the bay, Washington does not. It kind of dead-ends. It's supposed to be a bikeway. And they're on both sides of Solano Avenue, a major corridor. That's where you put the alternative routes, and you need one on both sides of San Pablo Avenue because it's not practical to try to cross the street to get to these places. I know what it's like to drive on bike paths in Berkeley, and El Cerrito, and Richmond, and Oakland, and it's wonderful, and it's safe. And the people here in Albany who live on these blocks are very intelligent, and you will be able to adapt, and using proper signage and awareness, you will adapt, and it will become safe, and everything will work. It will take time. There'll be an educational process, and the signage would have to be there too as well. So you can do it. Please, close the gap so everyone can navigate safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three, Preston Jordan, Dave Campbell, and Mickey, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike F.
My name is Anne Duncan. I live on Canes, on the 900 block. I sent you all a letter. Unfortunately, it was at 5:00 tonight, so you probably didn't get it yet. So I just gave her a copy. I'm opposed to the two-way on Canes. I live between Solano and Marin, and as to putting up barriers, it doesn't make sense to me if you want to make it a two-way street, to put a barrier up so it's not a two-way street. The only thing a two-way street would do on Canes is to enable U-turns, and I can't think of anything worse than backing out of my driveway, watching the car parked across the street, having my vision blocked because there are too many cars parked on the street, knowing that there are bicyclists going north and south, and now I've got to be worried about looking out for people that are doing U-turns. What's different with Stanage is Stanage is a legal two-way street. It doesn't have barriers. So I don't see the sense in the barriers if you want to make it a two-way street, which I am opposed to anyway, because there's just too much crowding. And I don't see where, even if you could get the DMV to change its regulations, I don't see where there's any advantage of parking north and south, because right now everybody's parked going south, and there's no parking. I can't park in front of my house. So speed bumps are okay. Just one last point. To pass a bicyclist, you're supposed to leave three feet. Well, if a car is parked on both sides of the street, car is going both ways, there's not three feet. So I would really urge you to send this back to the drawing boards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Preston Jordan, speaking for Albany Stroll's Rollers. Thank you for considering this issue. Hundreds of households of Albany Stroll's Rollers ask you to support the Traffic and Safety Commission recommendation. One person's hazard is another person's safety. I'm biking here one night down Canes in the legal direction. A motorist made a right-hand turn onto Canes, directly into my face, almost hitting me head-on. If there was a barrier there, it would be much less likely that they would choose to make that maneuver. I ask you, how would you recommend that the 70% of people who are interested in cycling but afraid to cycle on streets like San Pablo and Marin, even when there are bike lanes, because of the amount of traffic, how would you recommend that they cycle here? You cannot get to this position without biking on San Pablo or Marin with Adams the way it is. So Adams is the route that gets people actually to where we physically are today. Over the weekend, I watched the tides come up over the parking lot in Golden Gate Fields, the waterfront. This is a real issue that's occurring. This is a very high tide this particular weekend. It's an harbinger of things to come. I have been riding to LBL for work for over 20 years. I take Milvia as part of that route. A block in Milvia that's north of Cedar has a configuration that you were being asked to approve tonight. I've literally ridden it probably 4,000 times. I usually don't speak to personal anecdote because it's not scientific, but I think 4,000 times provides some reasonable data, and I didn't even, well, one, I've never had any problems on that block, and I didn't even notice which way people were parked down that block until a discussion with a neighbor who lives on Canes, who pointed out, well, are we going to have to make three-point turns to park? And I realized that all the motorists on that block in Milvia all park the same direction, facing the barricade on both sides of the street, and I've never had a problem with So I would ask you to consider making these cycling routes for Albany as well as for the region, as I just said. You can't get here without riding on San Pablo and Marin in the current configuration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Campbell. I'm the advocacy director with Bike East Bay. Some of you may know us as the East Bay Bicycle Coalition, same group. We do bike advocacy work in all of Alameda and Contra Costa counties, and I'm handing out a map, so I don't have copies for everyone in the room. Maybe Preston, you can just hold that and show that to folks if you will. To zoom out from this slide that you see up behind me, to give you a sense of what is the regional route here, and to let you know about some of the work that we're involved in to close the gap, as one of the other speakers said. To the north, we're getting new bike lanes on Carlson Boulevard in Richmond. Those have been funded, they've been approved, and they're coming. If they're not already on the ground, they're going to happen any day. So that's going to connect this gap to the north, north of Carlson Boulevard's existing bike lanes. And then also, the city of El Cerrito has a complete street plan for San Pablo Avenue, and they've approved bike lanes on San Pablo Avenue heading to the north to connect to the bike lanes on San Pablo Avenue in the city of San Pablo. So a couple bikeways to the north that come to this gap. And then to the south, yeah, thanks for putting that up there. To the south, Adams connects to the bicycle boulevard in Berkeley that primarily is Ninth, which then in Emeryville connects to Doyle Street, which connects to Horton, which connects to Mandela, which connects to Third, which gets you to downtown Oakland. So you're seeing this regional route, and it's shown here in red where the gap is, and that's this project here. And then I'll also say, some people have brought up the issue of how to fund this project. I want to tell you, you have already paid for this project. In 2014, the taxpayers in Alameda County voted to approve Measure BB. In Albany, they approved that measure by over 80% of the vote, and there's already $310 million allocated from Measure BB for the San Pablo Avenue corridor, and that can include all the bike pit improvements you want in this project. You've paid for this already. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next three, be... Next three, B. Maureen Crowley, Amy Smolins, and Ellen Davis Zapata.
My name is Michael Faimey. I'm Albany resident for 67 years, 43 of them on 600 block of Adams. In many respects, I view this proposal as a solution looking for a problem. There are several solutions that were postulated today. The two-way, open two-way traffic, I think everyone is opposed to. The external two-way traffic was supposed to be a traffic calming solution. I wasn't aware that we needed traffic calming, but with the minimal reverse traffic that would occur in an internal two-way, I don't think it would have any effect on traffic As for implementing the bicycle lane without a bridge at the blind center, that would result in a lot of bicycle traffic going down the existing footpath that connects Adams to San Pablo. And I can think of no better way to alienate the deaf school than doing that. Pardon me? I'm sorry. My daughter is deaf. Should have taken notes.
Thank you. Maureen Crowley, Canes. Safety must be the number one concern of all decisions that you make. By definition, our three streets are more congested, more homes, more driveways. On the 600 block of Canes, conservatively, I estimate we have two dozen children, over 20 seniors and disabled, not to mention our beloved pets, countless pets. Also, Canes and Adams are relatively close to the orientation center of the blind too, as we've mentioned. On page 17 of your 59-page traffic calming bikeway study, it proposes stop sign modifications, which we're still kind of skirting around. I hear you alluding that we're not going to touch stop signs. I hope that's the truth. And the rationale was, oh, well, it'll let the drivers know that we're entering a residential neighborhood. You're a bit more truthful in your previous record, your report in 2013, when you said the removal of stop signs was to call, it says, quote, "to enable continuous bike travel because stop signs every cross street slow down the cyclists." That's what it's really all about. Cyclists are going to continue to do whatever they do. They've been cycling up and down Canes and Adams the wrong way as long as I've been living there, which is quite a while now. And we just don't need to waste the money on this. Nothing's going to change. The cyclists invariably just choose to ignore the stop signs, but their poor behaviors should not necessitate endangering our residents by removing our stop signs. If anything, additional stop signs should be added. It will solve Peggy's issue of a four-way stop sign making things safer still. City Berkeley Bike Plan recent review found if you convert two ways to four, all four-way stops, you could reduce overall crashes in urban locations by up to 71% and pedestrian crashes by 39%. I'm very opposed to two-way within our block. I think it's dangerous. It's illegal to park the wrong side of the street, so I don't know how we're going to think we're going to get away with that. If I had to one way, it's fine. Six or seven years ago, I did suggest using Canes and Adams with Stanage and the other street, you know, one, like Peggy suggested also. That was proposed years ago and was just ignored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Smolins. Live on Canes Avenue, lived there for 25 of my 31 years here in Albany, and I support this plan. Many of my neighbors on the 900 block and around here also support the plan. Some of them have other obligations, so they can't show up, but they've written you letters. You've received those. This plan will calm traffic through visual friction, as one gentleman, Mr. Hertzberg, pointed out, and not add one single car. A lot of kids on our streets, such as Arnov, whom I wrote, I told you about in my email, they deserve a safe place to live and to bike. The rest of us do too. Addressing the mayor's concerns about queuing up, I think there'll be less queuing up southbound because people will be able to exit northbound now, so I think that that'll be a non-issue. One point is about businesses that no one's mentioned. So many of our businesses are on San Pablo Avenue. Studies show that people who walk and bike spend more money in local business districts. However, the speed on San Pablo and the volume are an impediment to many of the most, many of people, cyclists, other than the strongest and most intrepid cyclists like Mr. Barnes, for example. Many Albany residents and visitors tell me, and you've gotten letters from them too, that they don't frequent San Pablo Avenue businesses because they don't feel safe biking there. So bicycle facilities on Canes and Adams will parallel San Pablo so people can enjoy a safe ride within a block of their destinations. Another thing that hasn't been mentioned is the Climate Action Plan, adopted in 2010, has the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 25% by 2020 and further. Transportation is the cause of 55% of Albany's greenhouse gas emissions, 55%. So if you want to meet our Climate Action Plan goals, let's do this. As far as parking opposite way on the street, it's very common in Berkeley on bike boulevards. I'll give you each this. These are photographs that I took, and it's easy to do. Thank you.
After Ellen would be Ken McCroskey, Shirley Shu, Nancy Tyler, and if Joe Schwartz is still in the audience.
Mayor and council, I'm Ellen Davis Zapata. I live on the 900 block of Canes Avenue, and I'm very much in favor of two-way traffic on, at least on my block. And my reasons are many, but I'll start with the fact that, you know, once I back out of my driveway and drive down to Marin Avenue at probably 25 miles an hour or maybe more, then I have to sit at Marin Avenue and try to turn left because most of my business is up in Albany and usually to the north. And once I turn left on Marin, then what do I do? I go to either Stanage, Talbot, one of those streets, turn left, and go over to Solano Avenue or wherever I'm going, and I'm on somebody else's street that's two-way, and I know I have to drive a little slower because it's a two-way street. And so as far as the speed of traffic on Canes, I think it would be slower if it were a two-way street. The other issue is sort of an environmental issue. I have to go three blocks to go a half a block. And many, many people have to go three blocks to go a half a block. And all that time, I'm putting exhaust, more exhaust in the air. I'm using more gas. I'm using energy, someone's energy, three times what I would use. And so I think it is an environmental issue. I had a third, fourth, and fifth, but I'm drawing a blank. So I am very much, oh, I know, I'm very much in favor of this because of the idea of no turns from Marin down to Canes Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the chance to speak. As a Traffic and Safety Commissioner, I've been listening to lots of different points over the last six months. I went to all the meetings that were held and just tried to listen and not talk or think too much, but take it all in. I heard a lot of conflicting viewpoints. Nobody bikes here. We don't need the bike lanes. There's too much traffic here. Don't change anything. So it was actually a little hard to navigate how to adapt to all of those conflicting ideas. I think one overriding theme has been that many of the residents feel heavily impacted by where they live and don't wish to see change. As a Traffic and Safety Commissioner charged with getting the streets workable for all users, I think there needs to be some change. So it was a matter of trying to find a compromise that would address both the needs of the residents in living there all the time and the needs of growing number of cyclists of all ages who need safe places to cycle. And you have our recommendation. I want to say that it was a bit of a compromise. The recommendation from the consultants was to change the stop signs. It was very clear that the residents did not want that, so we made sure that we left those alone, and that's in our proposal. I want to echo former Traffic and Safety Commissioner Lubov, who said that a chain, in this case, a chain of bike routes, has forged one link at a time. Just because this link doesn't connect to others is no reason to avoid it. Peggy, can I respond to your question?
Please.
Okay. So let me make sure I understand it briefly. So do you want to restate it, or should I ask it?
I asked about six, so give me a...
So this was the, I believe, right turns from southbound 900 block Canes onto Marin?
My point was if, right now, the traffic backs up.
On Canes or Marin?
On Canes. Backs up on Canes because people are waiting to get across, either straight across or turning left.
Yeah.
If you, but there's enough room. If you move over a little bit to the left, a car can turn right. It's a one-way street. That's perfectly legal.
So it's a slip-through?
Yeah.
Okay.
After they've stopped, of course. Then if you have a bollard there, there won't be any ability to move over. So the traffic, in my thinking, is the traffic is going to back up even more, waiting to get across or to turn left. So to keep traffic flowing, make it a right turn only. But then it doesn't work well.
So let me answer that. We did not get to that level of detail as to making that right turn only. I can see where that, you could lead you that way. We did hear from residents that it's very difficult to go straight across and turn left at that intersection. And the two-way internal plan that's proposed allows residents to choose to go north and turn east on Solano and avoid that completely.
Okay, thank you.
My name, my name is Nancy Tyler. I live on the 1100 block, 1,000 block of Canes Avenue. And I've been listening to all this stuff. I'm not a biker anymore, but I walk. I mean, I only drove, you know, 2,400 miles last year, and I cross Marin at the risk of my life every day over onto Canes. And so my concern, it was brought up a little bit by the last gentleman, if it's, and I haven't been studying this, this is my first time coming here, but if it's a two-way street crossing Marin at Canes is really, really dangerous. And if people are coming from San Pablo going east, are they going to be able to turn left onto the 900 block of Canes? No. Okay. But I urge you all to consider the traffic patterns there and how fast on the two-way street everyone goes on that block, on Canes. And also to really think ahead of time because on Dartmouth, this is a little off the subject, but just to plan ahead, people still don't obey that new traffic pattern. You know, when they're going towards the new aged facility, I mean, they turn right, they turn left, they're going south on San Pablo, they still turn up on Dartmouth. It's really, because I see it all the time, to really think ahead of time about these traffic patterns. And that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shirley Shu, and I live at Adams and Clay near the bowling alley. I walk, cycle, and drive, and I oppose the two-way traffic. I am agreeable with a one-way bike lane because right now I do ride on the wrong side of Adams Street all the time. I find it alarming that there were many practical issues that should have been considered and were not considered so far, such as the emergency responders were not consulted, the connection points are not established with the School of the Blind not being consulted as well, and the circulation and traffic flow issues that have been discussed. I work, I live, and I work from home. So here are the practicalities as a resident of that really dangerous corner. The delivery and trash trucks often block traffic. So if it's a two-way street, what would happen? Because they block traffic all the time. We're close to bars. We have inebriated drivers drive down the street all the time. A couple years ago, there was a drunk driver who smashed into four parked cars, and thank God they were parked cars and there wasn't oncoming traffic. And we appreciated the fact that the police were able to get to our part of the street very quickly because they were able to just go straight down Adams instead of going around these roundabouts or what has been proposed. Drivers exit San Pablo all the time. They go down Clay, they make a really quick U-turn. If they were allowed to drive down Adams, they would just drive down Adams Street just as quickly as they do down when they make their illegal U-turn. And there have been a lot of accidents at Clay and San Pablo, between San Pablo and Adams. It's really hard exiting driveways. It's really tight right now. And as my time is running out, I respectfully request that the council listen to residents of Adams Street because we have to deal with this every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Elaine Stelton, and I own a building that's pretty close to the corner of Solano and Canes. And there's very poor visibility exiting my building for my tenants. And I'm concerned if traffic is going in both directions, it's going to actually make it more challenging. And also, I was waiting for a City of Albany inspector a couple weeks ago and sitting out in front of the Y for several hours, and I noticed a great number of elderly people, some of them coming in in walkers, some on, you know, with Canes, and having difficulty parking sometimes. And I was imagining the street and its proposed configuration and just thinking about these older folks that are used to going down the street, you know, probably for the last 30 years, driving down the street in one direction and not expecting two-way traffic and other complications, and also having diminished abilities to perhaps break and so forth. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last try. Anybody else who has not spoken? Well, thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for being so respectful of one another. And we'll bring it back to council to solve this problem.
Mayor.
Good luck, guys.
I have tons...
Michael, would you like to start?
Well, I'm not sure you want me to start. I have tons of comments and sort of a proposal. I could go first, I could go last. If I go last, I don't repeat things other people have said.
Michael, why don't you start?
Okay, I'm starting. All right, so I will just, let me give you a sense of my background. I'm a pretty serious cyclist. I do about 6,000 miles a year on my bikes. I have many. Until I retired, it was about 4,500 miles a year on my road bikes and 1,500 on my commute bike back and forth to campus. This year, it's about 5,000 on my road bikes and 1,000 to campus because I retired and I'm not riding my bike to campus anymore. You know, I've been doing this, I have vague memories of learning to ride a bike, but for the most part, riding a bike was something I always did my whole life. I really don't remember when I wasn't doing it. So you need to take anything I say with those considerations in mind. Amy just called me intrepid. I think actually the reason I bike to campus is because I'm cheap and I don't want to pay for parking. And also, that ride to campus is worth 200 calories, and for bikers, that's a standard unit of calories. It's called one standard doughnut, which I would eat as soon as I got to campus. So I mentioned, you know, some of the background I've done. I was in that neighborhood, I've ridden those neighborhoods, at least the Adams neighborhood on my bike. I drove around in circles for a long time on Canes and Adams this morning. I watched your meetings, I read your letters, I read the report, we met with staff. And most interestingly, I had a colleague at UC Berkeley who commutes from West Richmond. Fortunately, it was a slow day, and I was there at lunch, and she gave me the rundown on how bike commuters come down from Richmond. So I will... So I will share that as we go. There's a couple of issues that I think are critical in this conversations, which have been completely overlooked, and that is, we made Canes and Adams one-way for a reason. And that's because we didn't want what's called cut-through traffic. We didn't want people, when the traffic slows down, to cut over to a parallel street and try to go around. This cut-through traffic issue is especially critical now with what's called the Waze app, which will, can use your GPS unit in your phone and tell where traffic is moving fast and tell people to... Trouble with the Waze app is, it doesn't care what the speed limit is, it just sends cars to the place where cars are going fast. So if everyone's speeding down Canes, that's still the way you get directed. So what happened to the, I still think, at some point, there should be discussion of, well, is one-way traffic on Canes and Adams still a good idea because it stops cut-through traffic? I, you know, I didn't hear that. I think it probably is a good idea. The other issue is Albany Hill. Unlike all of our other cities, we have a very unique geographical feature on otherwise very large, flat coastal plain on the East Bay. It's called Albany Hill. And to pretend that doesn't exist, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I haven't heard anybody explicitly acknowledge the fact that if you're going to be building bike trails alongside a super steep hill like that, you're just going to encounter problems. However, I will tell you, interestingly enough, and I'll keep this short, Seattle many years ago had a similar problem. There is a hill called Denny Hill. And if you have ever been up there and been, done the tourist thing, between Pike Place Market and the Space Needle, there's this giant hill. And they sluiced it into Elliott Bay because they thought it would help development if they just flattened that hill away. So that's, so this is a thought experiment. Would you prefer us just to sluice Albany Hill into the bay? It would be nice and flat, you could just grid out those streets, it'd be easy for cars to go and traffic to go through there. But if you're like me, I kind of like that geographical feature. And even though it's unique and it causes problems, I would like it to stay. And, but if it's going to stay, we need to take responsibility for the fact that it causes problems in putting bike traffic, traffic along, you know, Adams and Madison and those streets. Okay. Can we get Google Maps up here? Can we do the, the street version of it, not the satellite version?
What would you like to see? Which street?
Well, just looking at that, I'd like to suggest something to the council that we kind of go through and give our sort of high-level comments, and then go back through it and try to resolve what we actually want to do rather than sort of jumble it all together. I think...
High-level comments first, and then, okay, that's fine.
If that makes sense to the council.
Okay, can we zoom in on where the, the school for the blind is? And we don't have a pointer, right? Okay, it's right there. So there's a critical issue for the viability in the long run of a bike path on Adams, as Clay Larson and others have said, is whether or not we ever get a bridge across that creek. Because if we don't get a bridge across that creek, you still have to go on San Pablo, at least down to Clay Street where the bowling alley is, and then you can cut back onto Adams if it was, if it was two-way, which it's not, or you can cut up to Madison. Now, the trouble with cutting up to Madison at Clay Street is between, I, believe me, I just did it on my bike, between Adams and Madison, that's a 14.4% grade for 250 feet. All these intersections are 250 feet running east-west. That's a pretty tough grade. It's not really realistic to expect many bicycles to grunt their way up that. However, if you already on, if you already have to be on San Pablo anyway, if you just go down one block further, you stay on San Pablo for two blocks instead of one, you get down to Castro Street, and that's where Dana Meyer Auto Repair is. That block in there going from, on Castro from Adams to Madison is only a 5% grade. And I think 5% grade is doable for a bike commuter. And if it's not, if you do it for two weeks, by the third week, it will be doable for you, trust me. So what I'm suggesting here is until we get clarification on to whether or not we're going to get a, get a bridge on state property up by the school for the blind, and I can see there's problems with mixing blind people and bike commuters, and the state might have some issues with that, I don't think we need to do anything on Adams Street. Because ultimately, the way you're going to get increasing bikers down Adams Street is to, you know, make it a through path from Carlson. So that's a thought. On the Adams side, just do nothing. Now, and what I'm suggesting here also is you split the issue of what we do on the Albany Hill side from the west side of, which is on the west, from what we do on the east side of San Pablo, because that's all flat. I rode, drove in my car today on Canes Avenue. And I've, you know, been a bike commuter for decades, and I think I have pretty good instincts. My instincts told me, you could not pay me to ride my bike on Canes Avenue. It's much too congested. Bike commuters need three things. You need enough space to maneuver, so if something goes wrong, you can move. You need clear line, you know, line of sight, so if something's going wrong up there, you can see what's going on. And you need those 4,000-pound hunks of steel called automobiles to be doing something consistent. Me personally, I don't care if it's fast or slow, I just want them to be predictable. Cars, when you have that many cars piled onto a street like Canes, the cars are not predictable. And I think if you make it two-way traffic and you throw bikes on that street, that makes the problem much worse. Because, think about it, and I'm going to have to get away from the mic, but, hang Crowded two-way streets is cars come down the middle, and then when they get close to each other, they go like this. Except in countries with a drive on the left, then they go like this, if you're lucky. So, and this is pretty unpredictable, because cars will just dart into any empty space they see along the curb. And if you happen to be in a car's blind spot when they do that, you know, you're just going to get knocked to the ground because they aren't going to see you and they're not thinking about you. So the idea you're going to have two-way traffic on a busy street doing this, and bikes in there all at the same time, is irresponsible, as far as I'm concerned personally as a bike commuter. And I am not voting for putting bikes on Canes Avenue. I just want to let you guys know that. Because there's a very good alternative, and it's Stanage. Stanage is 250 feet further east. It's already two ways. It's much more open. And it just, I would ride my bike on Stanage easily. I'm not, I wouldn't ride my bike on Canes. It's much a better alternative. It's simpler. Stanage does not go through to the plaza, however, you know, it's very top of Canes. Canes is already a bike route there, and it, Canes comes down to Brighton, and then you can just go, come down that way, go on to Brighton about a block, and then continue down Stanage. I think that's a better option. This issue that it's too far away from San Pablo, it's an extra 250 feet. Look, here's how this works. 60 miles an hour is 88 feet per second. 15 miles an hour is 22 feet per second. So biking speed is maybe seven and a half miles an hour. That's 11 feet per second. At 11 feet per second, that extra 250 feet is, on a flat road, is about 22 seconds. So if you're telling me people are not going to commute over to San Pablo Avenue because they don't want to go, 22 seconds more in one direction, then 22 seconds back the other direction, I think that's not realistic. I think people will do it. You know, so, I have lots of notes. One thing I think, so I think we've discussed, oh, one other point I want to make about the conversation with my skilled cycling friend who lives in San Pablo. If you're up, or sorry, Richmond, if you're up north, facing south, I'm north, you're south, this is the big, broad coastal plain of the East Bay. Bart's over here, the ocean's over here, and you've got this sore thumb of a unique geological feature called Albany Hill right here. If I'm a bike commuter, you know, I can go, well, there's lots of quiet streets and bike paths and stuff over by the Bart tracks. Or I can go all the way down that cool, you know, Bayside Bike Trail to Buchanan, and you can cut underneath all that stuff, thanks to Albany, California. You can go to Pierce Street, where my friends say that new intersection at Pierce Street really makes it easier to continue. And then you can continue there and either go up onto Marin, or you can cut through University Village on Jackson to the south and continue on up to campus. Where, by the way, there's lots of hills, and I see students and other people walking their bikes up those hills all the time. You know, so I think the idea that we have to keep these bike paths straight or level so people don't have to, you know, walk their bikes, then they get to campus and they have to walk their bikes. I'm like, you know, whatever. So my point is that you can get around Albany Hill and the steepness issues of Albany Hill if you're coming from the north, either by going down the east side or going down the Bayfront Trail on the west side. Most bicycle commuters are not going to look at that big old hill and say, yeah, you know, I'm going to go right for the big hill. They don't. That's just not the way bike commuters think. So to summarize for now, I, I would like to see something done on Stanage. Until we get some clarification on what the bridge is going to be near the school for the blind, I think we do nothing there. And that's it.
Whole lot of thoughts, and I'll try to condense mine a little bit more. I don't know that I can come up with the perfect plan that's going to make everybody happy. I don't know any, I don't know that Albany's quite ready for the perfect plan that can make everyone happy. You know, I get that we need a better conduit for, for bikes going north-south and something close to that San Pablo corridor. It's the future, you know, and it's the future for Albany, for the Bay Area, that we are going to have to start getting out of our cars, we're going to be more in transit, we're going to be more in bicycles. And that future is going to require changes that, you know, will be uncomfortable for a while because we're just not used to them. And, and nobody likes change. It's difficult. That said, you know, to my mind, the ideal bicycle lanes would not be on Adams or Canes or Stanage. They'd be on San Pablo. They'd be separated lanes that went down that corridor that you didn't have to worry about traffic because you had some kind of barrier between you and the traffic. You know, getting Caltrans to go for that, since that is a state highway, is not an easy pull, so I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. So whatever, but whatever we're coming up with in the future to do these bike lanes may be, to my mind, kind of temporary until we get an even better system, which would be on the corridor that we're, we're trying to follow. You know, one of the thoughts I had, and I'll just mention this because it popped in my mind while we were listening to all this, I was, I've been in Amsterdam a few times. I don't know if, how many here have. They have wonderful bike lanes. They take you wherever you want to go in Amsterdam. And they seem so natural, and you're on main corridors, but you are in sort of separated lanes. They didn't happen overnight. It took years for them to develop those, those bike lanes. And it's going to take us some time to get it right, I think, in the Bay Area, because we're, we were very car-oriented, more so than they were in Europe. So it, in some ways, it might be even more challenging for us to kind of make that transition into alternate transportation modes. That said, I, I appreciate that the Traffic and Safety Commission, you know, worked, you know, came up with a plan that, that suggests some bike lanes. And given all the problems we have with both Canes and Adams, that even if bikes weren't part of the, the question here, there, the problems with traffic, cars going the wrong way up the streets, narrow streets, et cetera, the density of population and the safety hazards, you know, it's, it's a challenge. So that made it particularly challenging, I think, for Traffic and Safety to try to, you know, make these suggestions and try to make as many people as possible happy. I like some of their ideas. I think at, at this point, I, I don't know that I can come up with a, you know, a system that's going to work in all the details, but I, I like a lot of their ideas. I think because of this issue of, of no bridge at this point along Adams, that perhaps Adams does need to be the secondary thought in this whole system right now. We're, we're talking about a, a limited number of blocks. And perhaps, to my mind, the thinking might be, well, let's concentrate on Canes. If we're going to do some kind of bike route on Canes, whatever we're doing, let's do it there, and we'll learn a lot. And then if at some point there's a possibility of a bridge, or, you know, doing a bike lane on Adams, you know, helps get a bridge happening, then well, we can take some of those lessons we've learned on Canes and, and apply them to, to Adams. I, you know, a couple of other quick thoughts. I live right next to Nielsen Street on another side of Berkeley, also a very narrow street, about 30 feet. And, but, two-way traffic, you get used to it. It's, it's not impossible, even in crowded, dense streets on a, on a 30-foot wide street to navigate. You know, if the, if, if you happen to show up on Monday morning and Waste Management is out there collecting garbage, you might have to wait for a while. Kind of get used to it. If UPS or FedEx are making deliveries, you know, that stops traffic. But again, you kind of deal with it and, and you, you work with, with those, those I also, what Ed was saying about the contra-flow lane, I kept coming back to that also, thinking that, that perhaps that solution should have been looked at a little bit longer in terms of getting two ways going on, say, Canes. Okay, so those are my, those are my big issues, you know. We could go into this. I think in, in many ways, I, because of the issues around safety vehicles, police and fire vehicles, and, and the fact they haven't weighed into this, I'm not sure that we're ready to give direction at this point to the city to, to follow through. But we need to keep talking about it.
Phil?
Do you want to, do you want to go next? Sure, if you prefer. Okay, well, if we're giving our credentials, let me say that I'm also a cyclist with somewhat different viewpoints than my fellow council member. He's probably a stronger cyclist, I'm also a strong cyclist. I, to get here, to get to all these council meetings, I ride down, I ride down Solano and take a left turn onto San Pablo and grit my teeth and, and hope I don't get hit coming down San Pablo to the council meeting. And, but what I appreciate is, on city commissions, until I landed in the council where I am now, and I've been following these issues of cyclist and, and pedestrian access. I, as you know, I'm an advocate for, for those issues. When we talk about, well, why can't cyclists just go another block out of their way? When we ask people in cars to do this, it's called a detour, and people don't like it. There is, there is quite an additional effort to not have a straight path to where you're going. Ask a car driver not to take the straightest path, and they will refuse. Ask a cyclist, ask a pedestrian, we all want to go the straightest path. All of, all modes do. So I don't, I don't buy that we shouldn't have straight paths and we should deviate. That's one thing. Another thing I strongly believe is we need to... Another thing I strongly believe is we need to better accommodate cyclists. The city is far behind in the accommodation of cyclists, and we just need to take every single step we can take. We have, look at our neighbors to the south and north, east and west, we are far behind. So I think we need to move forward. Chain is forged one link at a time. I don't know if that's still true anymore, probably mass production has made that obsolete, but I do believe this is what happens. Look at the discontinuous route of the path on Marin and then the bike lanes that stopped at Cornell on, sorry, the path on Buchanan and then the bike lanes that stopped on Marin. Well, both of those facilities were built and now they're being joined together. And that's what happens when you take one step at a time. You don't say, "Oh, the, this section is not here, so let's not do anything." No, you move forward and you do what you can do as you can do it, as the funds are available. And as was pointed out, we're in a great position right now to do this, due to your votes likely for Measures B and BB, which fund the car, pedestrian and bicycle projects. As far as school for the blind goes, I gave the, my resume as a, with my involvement with the city because I know that that relationship between the school for the blind and that project has changed completely over the years, and it's been all up and down. In 2006, from what I understand, the director of the school for the blind said, "No way we ever have cyclists come by here. We don't want anything like that." At one point, the director of the school for the blind was welcoming of a project like this because after all, blind folks will have to learn to negotiate everything. And so they might not want a bike path right in front of their facility, but it's something that they might also want to have as a facility, as a practice facility. I don't know how the directors feel now. In public service, directors change a lot. I think that conversation certainly should be had, but I certainly don't think it's out of the question to put a bike facility in front of the school for the blind. And what a great facility it would be for pedestrians and bicyclists to cross there at Adams and to link one city to another. This, I strongly believe, the two-way streets are safer. They are safer because they are slower. There's not one planner, one traffic planner, who will tell you that a wider street is slower. You widen the street, you make cars speed up. The narrower the street, the slower the traffic. And I believe if you bring in two-way traffic, you're going to slow that traffic down because people will have to pass each other. And it's possible to do so on a 30-foot street, because I live on one of those 30-foot streets, San Carlos Avenue, and we do that sometimes. People squeak by, if they're not as confident, they pull over and let one person pass. It happens, and we all slow down as a result of that. This is not one quickly thought-out idea. This is a long-term desired project. Another reason why I brought this, I brought up my resume in the city. This has been on the books, "There's something we want to do, something we want to study, the best way to do for a long time." This and the plan before you was written by professional traffic planning consultants. So I urge the council not to, to take that into consideration, that professionals put this together. Our body that studies these things studied it and made their recommendation, and so this is not someone just coming out of the blue and saying, "Hey, this seems like a good idea." No, this is a lot, a lot of thought went into it. It might not be perfect, but a lot of thought went into this. So what we're doing tonight, what we're asked to be, what we're asked to do tonight is to accept the presentation of a study. We are not allocating funds for this project. We are not voting on doing this project. We are accepting a study which will go into our plan to say, "Yeah, this is probably something we want to do." This is not the end of the road. We will have lots of other chances, and the public will have lots of other chances to weigh in on this. We could do a pilot. It's going to be easy to do a pilot of this. We can push this back to Traffic and Safety if people think that's the thing we should do, but I urge the council, let's not do nothing. Let's move forward with, I think, this, because a lot of thought's been put into it, it's not written in stone, but please, let's not do nothing. I have a lot of other comments, but I'll stop there for now.
Well, I'm not a world-class cyclist. I do have a bike. It's a beach bike with fat tires and big handlebars. And when I ride it in Albany, I ride really, really, really slowly, and I generally end up walking up the hills, you know, to get to a bike path, because I love bike paths. And I've never been to Amsterdam, but I have been to Milvia Street in Berkeley, and I think it's fantastic. I mean, it's just a, it's visually attractive. It seems to work for both bicyclists and the people who live on Milvia. And one interesting thing is that there's very little car traffic. People see the bicycle signs and signals and they kind of stay off it. That's my experience of it. So there may be, if I lived, now I live on a wide street, and that has its own drawbacks. Cars will sometimes just fly down it because it's wide and they've got, you know, a free, a freeway in front of them. If I lived on one of these very narrow streets, my goals would be safety attained through slowness, reduction of traffic, visual improvements, and ease of parking. And I think that actually this project could move forward in all of those areas. The wrong-way parking, I understand is an issue, we'll have to take a look at it. It happens in Berkeley. In a lot of places, there is wrong-way parking. I don't know, I don't know why. Maybe it's just can't be allowed, but it doesn't have to be enforced. You see that kind of thing quite a bit. So I lean, and I also agree with the notion that, you know, it's like having a bike path to Yerba Buena Island. You start, you do what you can, and I think that if we have a bike, a bike boulevard on Adams, we're more likely to move forward and move more expeditiously towards having a bike bridge as well. So I lean strongly in favor of this, but I also very much like the idea of a pilot. One of my experiences has been, and with all due respect to traffic expertise, you read studies and they all make sense, and then they put in the project and you're just very surprised. There's always surprises from what actually happens when you do things. And I think that a pilot, maybe going to traffic, asking Traffic and Safety to take the next step to prepare a pilot, to give this a try and ask neighbors, you know, I hear you that if you're coming out of your, especially if you're backing out of a driveway and you've got two-way traffic, it's, that's a detriment compared to one-way traffic. But what if there's less traffic and it's slower? That could actually be, that could be a positive. We don't know. We don't know exactly what it is going to look like. And to me, a pilot is a very attractive proposition.
Well, I think now I have more questions than I did when I started. You know, I do have a lot of issues with the project the way it is right now. I think there are just too many points of conflict with the barriers and two-way streets, but they're really one-way streets, but they're really two-way streets. So, thinking about this, it occurred to me that you can't, you have to have either one-way streets or two-way streets. You can't have both, and I think that's what we're trying to do here, and that, in my mind, isn't working very well. I do think Canes and Adams are a little bit different than some of these other very narrow streets, simply by their volume and by their nearness to San Pablo and sort of a different culture to them. So I'm not sure they are exactly the same as all the other 30-foot wide streets. And Jeff, maybe you know the answer to this? Do you know when we, we or anybody had the last conversation with Orientation Center for the Blind?
We've talked with them from time to time on specific projects, but on...
The bridge?
The bridge, I don't know.
Okay, that's...
We could, we could certainly restart that conversation right away, if, I think that would probably be helpful.
And does anybody know how wide Milvia Street is?
Thirty-six feet.
Thank you.
I have a picture for you.
I don't need a picture, that's all I need. Thank you, Maureen. You know, in driving through Berkeley, on occasion, they seem to allow parking to opposite directions all over town. That seems to be their culture. That's fine, they run their city however they want. I don't think it's a good idea to set up things and say, "Well, we just won't enforce it." I think that's a really bad way of doing it. So I think, you know, if we're going to have parking going different ways, we really need to get a legal opinion if that's something that we can do and really think about it. So, you know, and I'm not a cyclist, although every morning it do why. But I'm still not convinced if you're a cyclist and you're riding 10 or 15 or 20 miles to work, why you can't ride an extra 250 feet. I don't know why Stanage doesn't work. I mean, I've really tried to listen, tried to understand, and I don't quite understand that piece yet. And I think Stanage would just be a better solution. It's already two ways, it just seems like it would work better. Okay, so moving us forward, our charge, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, our charge is to give you clear policy direction for action going forward? So we need to give you some direction? Is that, am I right?
Yes, please.
And the other thing, I think, you know, we've talked about a pilot program, I think that's probably a good idea, but I think we need to figure out, and not tonight, but to figure out what's successful. Do a pilot program, and at the end of the program, what did we measure? What were the results? And did we meet the goals? So I think that needs to be a part of what we're doing. So if, it seems to me there's four choices, and let me read what I think the four choices are, and then council, you can jump in and say, "That's not right." And I'm not putting them in any particular order, I'm just doing them. One choice is to do nothing. One choice would be to use Stanage and Adams as bicycle boulevards. And I haven't forgotten that Canes is interested in some traffic calming, so that's another bullet point. Another choice is what was presented of two ways with the bollards, and another would be just two ways on Canes and Adams with some traffic calming. Do those feel like the four choices that we have to think about?
What was your second?
What was the last one?
Let me do them all again, since I got two different questions. Okay. One is do nothing. Number two, or the next one, is using Stanage and Adams as two ways. I guess, and maybe you should break that into Stanage, where Adams being two ways. What was proposed, the two-way streets with the bollards? Or two-way streets without the bollards?
So you're excluding Canes out of that?
No. No, I'm having Canes and Adams on the last one.
Oh, Canes and Adams.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Last one, two-way on both Canes and Adams. Now, we certainly can break it down.
So which of these options includes the bollards idea?
Free Javendel from the meeting.
The two-way with the bollards.
What number was that?
Free.
Two-way internal, internal two-way.
Internal two-way. So just off the top, is there anybody who wants to take any of those just off the table? I would take doing nothing off the table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we want to have a plan. If it were, to me, I would take the bollards off. I really think there's a lot of potential for conflict, but I'm willing to hear you all out.
That's number three?
Yes.
That's, I wouldn't take that off, that's my strong preference.
I know.
That's an easy thing to pilot, bollards. You can, you can put up barriers, temporary barriers, and if they work, you make something beautiful in their place. If they don't work, you take them down and forget it. So that, to me, would be a pilot, an easy pilot. We have Lubov.
Can you have internal two-way without bollards?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
I don't want to start more public comment.
It sounds like you're saying...
Can we, if we're going to have this...
Lubov, let us handle it, okay? The other choice is just regular two-way traffic. Michael, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I think my preferences are to discuss the bridge with school for the blind, develop the idea of turning Stanage, not Canes, into a bicycle boulevard. In as far as the bollards idea, wasn't that like a Clash album? I, you know, I agree with Rochelle, it's relatively easy to pilot. Jeff did mention that in the staff report. My concern is one that you raised, is that we have very sort of mushy criteria for how we evaluate this stuff. Like, for example, that psychopath out there, not the sidewalk, which is what the runners use and strollers use, but the psychopath was low millions of dollars, probably grant-funded? Yes, no?
The psychopath along...
Buchanan?
Buchanan.
Oh, yes.
And I have, given how much we worked on that project, I have been disappointed because I don't see a lot of bicycles on it, ever. I see some, and I know from colleagues that it is very useful for commuting. So where is the cost-benefit analysis of doing projects like this? What constitutes success? What constitutes failure? How long are we going to evaluate these projects? This is all really mushy, and I'm anticipating what I think the folks on Adams will say is that you're going to run up, you're going to put this pilot project in, and there's so little rigorous planning and criteria for taking it out or evaluating that we're just going to have to live with it. You're going to forget about it and we're stuck with it forever. And I think that's a legitimate concern, so if we're going to, are we going to pilot the bollards idea? And some of the neighbors like it, not the majority for sure. We need to be really clear about timelines, traffic counts, expectations, costs, reserving enough money to take it all back out in three years if we decide it didn't work, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, under those kind of conditions, you know, I'd be willing to consider doing a pilot project.
In a way, I disagree with you, because we have state law that mandates that we have to accommodate all modes. So we don't have to, state law does not mandate that we have to measure the number of cyclists, the number of drivers, the number of pedestrians. It says we have to accommodate them.
I am talking about social responsibility to my taxpayers. I don't want to see my taxpayers' money wasted on projects that are inefficient. And so therefore, I think we got to have reasonable criteria for how we spend our taxpayers' money. That's my job.
I also think if it doesn't work, there's another alternative.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, exactly. Yeah, I didn't, you're right, I jumped the gun a little bit too much. Yes, as long as we keep moving on accommodation, then yeah, measuring which project is the best is not a bad thing.
So, a question. If we're thinking of a pilot program, are we thinking of something on both Adams and Canes or on... on both Adams and Canes, or on Stanage, or would we just pick one street and do the pilot? And, you know, I guess my questions would be, how long should the pilot last? You know, what, you know, I agree. I think we need to set up something for cyclists, and it may not be initially, hundreds of cyclists will appear that weren't there before were using it, but over time, I think it would increase. But the bigger questions, I think, for the, for the community is questions around safety. And can people adopt to it? Does it increase traffic, or, you know, increase traffic on these streets that aren't cyclists? So are we just thinking, picking one street and trying something?
I don't think so. I mean, to me, it would be, the first question would be, do we want to do a pilot, or do we want to adopt a policy? And I think that a pilot would make a great deal of sense. The next issue would be, pilot what? Adams and Canes, Adams and Stanage, just Canes, just Stanage? I mean, you could go on with lots of different ones.
That's what I'm asking.
I would, you know, given that we have, we have the study, we have, we've, you know, I hear a lot of reasons to do, to stay close to what we have. Say, a pilot on Adams and Canes would be, would be my preference with the Bollards. And in any configuration, I would urge that we move forward with the bridge. I think that's an important project.
A question for Jeff. So this was paid for by a grant from the Transportation Commission. What are the odds of us getting grant money to do pilot? I would think they'd be pretty good.
Leda has the-
Grant queen?
Yeah.
She's probably already got a grant.
She's the one that will have to do the work, so I'm going to let her answer the question.
I think we should bring it up to, I'll bring it up to the Alameda County Transportation Commission. I don't, I think there is, there might be some funds for a pilot program or a study.
I think, Jeff, you had mentioned a figure of $300,000 about an hour ago.
That would be for implementation of the commission's recommendation. Again, very rough number, but yes, for both streets.
And that would be effectively the same cost of what a pilot would be?
Not necessarily. A pilot, I would envision a pilot being a more limited area perhaps, and certainly a, using a K-Rail or some other temporary plastic element that we put in the streets. So we're not doing landscaping, we're not doing irrigation, or even, even spending time particularly designing those to the level of detail. We would do the basic stuff about emergency vehicles and so forth, but the design would be a lot easier, and then there wouldn't, it wouldn't be a construction project. It'd be something that we literally could lift up with a forklift and move it away if we had to.
You know, I have a little bit of angst about, after listening to the Traffic and Safety meeting and listening to all of you tonight, basically to do a pilot, exactly what we heard the neighbors didn't want. And I, I know there wasn't 100%, but there's a high percentage of neighbors who didn't like this plan. So I'm wondering if we could figure out a way to pilot something that might be more amenable to them and still meet the goal of getting the cyclists through as easily as they can do it. Is there anything we can think of that works that way?
You know, something that I thought I saw mentioned in, in the report that, that neighbors had brought up, a lot of, a lot of the issues are around parking and, and lack of parking, or all the cars that come over from shops on San Pablo and park on Adams or Canes. You know, I, this might be going back to an issue that we've sort of dropped, but the idea of setting up some sort of parking permit plan on both Canes and Adams, that, that more limits the parking that's available to the neighbors, at least it might free up some spaces and take away some of the issues that, that lack of parking brings up.
That's it. I think that's exactly right. I had written that down, but I hadn't brought that up yet, is that that's going to be the way to permanently solve a lot of the parking issues that neighbors and residents and businesses have, is to do the parking permit so that the neighbors have the spaces that, to themselves, that they deserve.
A couple of thoughts. Parking permitting doesn't make cars goes away, go away, just makes them move on to someone else's street. So if, I actually like the idea of using Stanage, as I've said, as a bike boulevard. So if you're going to do a parking permit process, you could do it on Stanage Street. Now, one sort of inexpensive option for Adams, you know, it's one-way northbound until Clay, and it's two ways northbound into the cul-de-sac where the School for the Blind is. One simple thing you could do was bring back the boundary between one-way and two-way down to Castro Street. That would be moving it, pushing that boundary down one block south. So it's one-way only to Castro, and then it's two ways to Clay, and then into the School for the Blind. That way, people on bicycles could come all the way down to Castro and then turn on up to Madison Street, and that, the grade there for that 250 feet is only about 5% because on Clay, it's 14 and 1/2%. So that would make it pretty easy for people, on their bikes, bridge or not, to come down two blocks, make a right turn uphill to the west on Castro, get onto Madison, which is already a two-way street, and then go over to Jackson or do whatever they want. So it's a minimal one-block change.
So, maybe, Nick, you could help me understand this. If you're coming Carlson, coming from Richmond, how do you get to Adams at this point?
San Pablo.
Okay, that's, so they are doing that now. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make the substitute idea. So it sounds like Canes versus Stanage, still a little bit of a discussion there. Let's do pilot, let's move forward. Sorry, did I say, yeah, Canes, Stan, let's do a pilot, move forward with Adams. And put the issue of Stanage versus Canes aside for the moment and settle that one later. So at least we can move forward. We could say we approve this concept for Adams. We reserve the right to make some, have some other thoughts later.
Yeah, that's fine. We still have to figure out what concept we want for Adams, though. I mean, I agree, we should, we can just, we don't have to bite off everything.
So are you proposing that we would use the Bollard-
Yeah, the three.
-or whatever. Okay.
And, and, you know, I'm sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors, and I really do believe that, that we don't know exactly what's going to happen. I believe it could be that the, the street is made even better. But maybe, maybe that's not true. But I do believe that that's possible.
I would want to put the caveat on there that we don't do this without the full vetting of the police and fire.
So, we'd go forward with a pilot, but with no east side component at all? That seemed, to me, that feels like half a pilot. I don't know. That seems like less than-
We need a co-pilot.
We need a co-pilot, precisely, yeah.
Well, I was just trying to come up with some compromise that we could move forward with, but-
Okay, so then what if, what if we had then Stanage be the other piece, and that's kind of a compromise instead of Canes?
I've been racking my brains to figure out a, a good analogy. It's as if you were a car driver, and all of a sudden you couldn't use Key Route because we wanted to put flowerpots in it. Why don't you just go down Talbot? You know, what's the big deal?
How about if I was a car driver going westbound on Dartmouth and suddenly had to turn right instead of left?
You know, we-
You lost me there, but-
Think about it. Well, you get, now you have to turn right. We've changed, we've changed the traffic pattern. We do that all the time.
Well, maybe we'll have to talk after this, about that, but-
We should keep in mind that people who live on Stanage have not been consulted.
For this, yeah.
And remember, they're the ones who got the, the Community Resource Center. Everybody, you know, part of living in society is, things change, and-
But nothing's changing for them.
They change in ways that people, well, we don't know if anything, what, what is going to change for people who live on, on these streets. That's the idea of a pilot, to see what changes and, and evaluate it. It may be that, that the concerns are unfounded. It may be that, that it's far worse than anybody has predicted. We don't know. But I think the way to find out would be to, to do a pilot and do it, I would support doing it on both sides.
Well, I support that as well, but, go ahead.
You know, my question is, for how long? Because, you know, if you do it for a month, then no one will be, no one will like it, and no one will get used to it. Do you do it for six months, a year? You know, what's the criteria there?
That's the kind of thing I would want Traffic and Safety to look at, whether, how long to do it, and what kind of criteria and metrics and surveys and things that we would, we would want to have.
Madam Mayor, if I may make a suggestion, if-
Please.
Based on the conversation so far, I think we can put together a kind of, a rather open discussion at Traffic and Safety of taking your discussion and asking them to evaluate, two or three, give you a range of pilot alternatives that could be brought back to you. And that would then be, including having some measurement criteria, location, making sure that the neighborhoods that would be impacted by it are a part of that discussion, and then bringing it back to the council for, for you to react to.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need a motion?
Um-
Please say no.
There's a, there's a couple of little, can I just make two quick comments?
Hang on, let me get it answered. Do you want a motion?
I think we would like a motion, just to make sure that we are not missing anything that's critical to one of you or all of you.
I'll make that motion if-
Before you do that, let's let Michael finish.
Well, I just wanted to make a couple of points. You know, I do commute on Millvia Street, and that's my favorite bike commute street, too. And however, sometimes I don't, I go on one of the other parallel side streets to Millvia, and they're just as good. But I think the real benefit of those streets is that there's not a lot of traffic and they're wide. Final point, just since we may be going forward with this plan, there's, you know, there is a bit of a problem with the wrong-way parking thing, because when a car is pulling out, say, imagine I'm a bike heading southbound on Adams, and there's cars parked in the same direction on both sides that I'm going against that traffic load. When a car pulls out, the driver is on the inside, so they can't see me coming until their whole car is out into the street. And that happened to me about two months ago. I was bombing out of the hills. Somebody was parked the wrong way on a street, very steep street, and they pulled their SUV out right in front of me. And I had nowhere to go. And I, it was one of those things where you don't even think about it. I just pulled my bike over, and my left elbow was brushing the passenger side of the SUV. Unfortunately, there was a gap, you know, big enough that I could squeeze my bike through there. And, you know, I just want to say, especially if it's steep enough that a bike is moving fast, and it's a hillside, that there are, there really is a downside to having cars parking in the wrong direction. So, and that, if it's flat, it's not so bad.
Okay, so you wanted to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we refer this matter back to Traffic and Safety with the request that they develop a recommendation for a pilot of this project, which would include, let's see. Well, I can't, you know, I guess that's all we-
Perhaps, I think Jeff, Jeff was suggesting that they bring us back a number of alternatives, which might be a way to go.
Well, perhaps that they, you're thinking they'd look at Stanage and at other-
Well, different ways to adopt the pilot, or to implement the pilot, so that we could choose from those.
I'd, I'd, I'd rather not throw open every, like, you know, the contra-flow sounded to me like a good idea, but it looks like it was thought about pretty carefully, and that that's not part of what they want to pilot. I think that for a pilot, the easiest thing would be to have, basically, the recommended project that's been developed from the alternatives, and see how it, how it works over some period of time. And with the, gosh, there was something I was going to add. I'm going to add that we, oh, that the research, that we get research done on the wrong-way parking. Is it legal? It's hard to believe that something that Berkeley could give parking tickets for, that they would not, if you, you know. So we need to find that out. And we also, gosh, there was one other thing. The-
Setting by public safety?
The bridge. Oh, the bridge, yes, that we need, that we also asks, simultaneously ask the staff to have some conversation, at least have a talk with the, the School for the Blind about how they would view this at this point in their institutional life.
Consideration of moving the one-way, two-way boundary on Adams Street, one block further south from Clay, back down to Castro.
If you're making a motion, I think that would have to be an amendment.
Would you, I'll make that a friendly amendment if you like.
You know, my problem with that is Madison, I just don't see what Madison gets for us. I mean, it just, that-
It's two-way.
It moves them uphill.
Madison is two-way.
Pardon?
Madison is two-way. And Adams is-
Yeah, I mean, it's like, it's like the Stanage issue, except that it's, in addition to being a little further away, it's uphill. It might be that, you know, coming out of this pilot, we say, "Well, this did not work, but it would work if we were on a regular two-way street. We don't want the Bollards, we want a regular two-way street." So we do the same pilot, but we do it on Madison and Stanage. That would be, to me, would be a future consideration if this turns out to be as terrible as people are afraid it will be. I don't think it will be terrible. I think it will actually be pretty good in a number of ways. I think I would want it if I lived on one of these streets personally. But we'll have to do it to see.
Okay, can we get a second to the motion?
I, I think I can second it, but now that we've, it's become quite a lengthy motion.
Okay, no, we'll clear it again.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we refer it back to Traffic and Safety for a pilot of basically the project as it came to us with the stop signs, et cetera, with the Bollards, et cetera. And that we, we simultaneously, we ask the staff to look into the legalities of wrong-way parking, and also to check in with the School of the Blind to find out how they are thinking, how they would think about the bridge at this point.
Ms. Mason, apologies, but you also wanted to do full bidding with these-
Oh, yes, thank you very much, yes, also.
Public safety.
Public safety.
And can I offer a friendly amendment, that we ask them to consider a timeline for the pilot?
Yes. I think that a timeline, that the two things that we'd ask them to consider would be the timeline and the metrics. What, what information exactly would this be? Survey neighbors? How did this work for you? What, are there problems you didn't expect? Are there problems that you did expect, and they materialized or not? All that kind of thing. I would want Traffic and Safety to figure out, how can we most usefully do this, this pilot and maximize the information?
Item they would need to consider, we can take this as a friendly amendment or not, we need some device that separates counting cars from counting bicycles. And I'm not sure how you do that, short of a video system.
I can second that, second your motion. I do have one item of discussion before we vote on that, though. I just want to point out, for, for the discussion of having- we vote on that, though. I just want to point out for people, for the discussion of having policies or having even laws on the books that the police don't enforce, I can assure you that we have that in our town and other towns have that, that the police consciously do not enforce certain laws. And that, I'm not advocating for that, but that is police, that is what happens.
Would you, are we ready to vote? Is everybody clear of the motion?
Mm-hmm.
As clear as you get this afternoon.
Yeah, clear as mud.
Okay, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you all. Remember, it's, they'll bring it back to us one more time, see what the pilot's going to be. All right, where are we? Okay, we still have business to do, so you're welcome to stay, but if you're going to leave, please do it fairly quietly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11-3, City Council Reorganization. Cole, would you like to introduce this?
I'm going to defer to our interim city clerk.
Hi. So this is usually the meeting that the City Council reorganizes and elect the mayor and vice mayor for the next year. And we will take nominations for the mayor and vice mayor in the regular voting orders and vote on it in the reverse order that the nominations were made. The nomination for the mayor would go first, and when that is done, we'll repeat that process for the vice mayor.
And is there discussion?
I think there certainly can be, but I thought that, to clarify, I thought we were going to, we had moved to Robert's Rules of Order where we do not all make a nomination, but the only those who want to make the nomination. I thought that that was what the change in council procedure was.
You have the council procedure, an excerpt in your staff report. We can certainly do whatever the council needs to do at the dais as we move forward with the process. Basically, that the mayor would poll each member to see if they have a nomination. If you don't have a nomination, then you simply pass.
That's, to my understanding, that's somewhat different than Robert's Rules of Order, but, you know, whatever the mayor and staff would like.
I'm deferring to the written policy and the adopted City Council administrative policies, which is included as an excerpt in your staff report.
I'm having a little trouble getting my report to come up.
It's on the screen, if that's helpful to you. I know it's small.
All right. So are there any other questions from council? Before we do the vote, is there any public comment? Seeing no one flinching, we will start with Councilmember Barnes.
I nominate Peggy McQuaid.
Councilmember Moss?
I will nominate Peggy McQuaid.
And I will do the same. Councilmember Nason?
I will do the same.
Well, that's very interesting. So I thought, I'm a little confused, because I thought we were moving to Robert's Rules of Order where people would just, there would be one nomination per person who, to be nominated. This is a little bit odd to me, but seeing where this is going, I will pass.
Okay. So we'll bring it back for vote. Will you poll the council, please?
What the formal motion is, we are voting to appoint Peggy McQuaid as our mayor.
Correct. Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. And thank you all. Okay, we'll do it again. Whoops. Accepting nominations for vice mayor. We'll start with Councilmember Barnes.
Rochelle Nason.
I would nominate Nick Pilch.
I'll nominate Rochelle.
I'll nominate myself.
I'll nominate myself.
Councilmember Barnes?
I'm sorry, what's the motion?
The motion is for Council, Vice Mayor Pilch to be the next vice mayor, because the nomination was second. So again, the motion is for Vice Mayor Pilch.
Yeah, you're right.
To be the next vice mayor. Councilmember Barnes?
No.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nason?
No.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
No.
So the next motion would be for Councilmember Nason to be the next vice mayor. Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch? Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the fun part of dividing up the regional bodies. The regional bodies.
So I've provided two matrix in front of you. The top one, the first sheet with a little bit of color on it, that's the appointees currently, the current appointees. And the second one that's black and white has some blank spots in there. The only ones that are filled in are the predefined ones. So besides its predefined ones, all the others can be appointed per council discussion.
Okay.
Mayor McQuaid, if I could butt in here, if you want to continue this for a bit, you might want to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Thank you.
I move to continue till 11:00.
One second.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Vice, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, I know you've got this really organized, but now I'm a little confused. So the black and white one, we just need to fill in real names.
It's a worksheet.
Okay, I've got it. Okay, Alameda County Mayor's Conference, that by its very name is the mayor, with the alternate being the vice mayor. Alameda County Transportation Commission.
Would you consider giving that up for me, Pete?
Or...
Transportation, ACTC.
The East Bay Community...
No, ACTC.
ACTC.
Would I want to give that up for...
Would you consider, would you consider letting me do that?
Would I consider giving it up?
Yeah.
I'd love to do one more year, but I, you know, I've been doing it three years. It, you know, I know you would like to be on that one.
I think I could make a big difference there.
Would you want to give up the East Bay Community Energy?
Ah, there's, there's the rub.
Sausage is getting made now.
Can you put this on down?
I'll trade you.
I'll trade you. Why don't we come...
Let me pass, pass over that one.
Yeah, let's pass that one for a minute, and we'll come back to it. The Library Advisory Committee, that seems to be in place right now. A-BAG, it was...
Me.
It was, yeah, it was Rochelle and Nick. Would you like to keep that?
I don't feel strongly about it one way or another, but...
Okay.
Are you interested in doing that this time?
Um, I, I'll put, yeah, I'll say tentative, definitely tentative interest, depending on how the ACTC goes. I'm just thinking about my time.
Right, yeah, right.
I would, you know, I'd like to do that.
Okay. Let's see how the transportation shifts out, and then if not, we'll, you're there.
The one thing with A-BAG, I see that as a potential platform for advocating for hospital capacity, emergency room capacity for growing communities. So maybe I would, I would hold on to that as part of the alt debates issue.
Are we still calling it A-BAG? Are we calling it MTC now? What's the new name?
It's still A-BAG.
It's still A-BAG.
It's just a, kind of a phasing out organization, it seems.
A-BAG is where we get the representation, so...
Yep.
Yeah. So did I hear, Michael, that you're interested in A-BAG?
I think we're going to resolve it later, depending on your first swap.
You did hear that, but if you...
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, got it.
Okay, League of California Cities, I'd like to keep that one. I would need an alternate.
Want to keep doing it, Pete?
I think, actually, I think Nick's been...
Yeah, I thought Nick was the alternate on that.
I don't, was, I think, and someone else should be the alternate, because I participate by being on the Environmental Quality Committee, so I feel like I get my...
I can be the alternate if you want.
Okay, thank you.
All right, which one are we marking up? I'm sorry, the colored one or the black and white one?
Black and white.
Okay, then we have Waste Management. Looks like we have no choice. Your term goes another year. I shouldn't say we have no choice. We're happy to have you for another year.
You know, it's the county that has to make that appointment, so...
Alameda...
I'd like to continue to be the alternate, alternate. I'm interested in that.
The Housing Authority, again, your term's still good.
You know, that one I've...
I know, and I would have...
You know, I did...
I would have taken it from you, but...
Yeah, well, I was, I was hoping you were going to take it at the beginning, but...
I know, and I just couldn't, and now I can.
Yeah, okay.
There's no alternates to Moss, it says right there.
One trick pony there. Okay, the JPA.
I'd like to continue that.
Okay.
And I, you know, I, I would be going to those meetings, even if I wasn't an alternative, but I'm happy to be an alternative on that.
JPA, all right.
They don't meet very often, the JPA, I would have to say.
Okay, and then the East Bay Community Energy.
Still very interested in doing that. I'm doing a count of who has what, and it may be the fairest thing to allow me to do, too.
Is, you know, I don't see Michael accept as an alternate. Is there anything on this list that you particularly want to do?
Well, there's the possibility of me doing something up above.
Why don't we do this? I don't...
The difference now is I'm retired, so I can take on a lot more stuff.
Yep.
So...
Well, Nick, I know that, I mean, you started with the East Bay Energy as like the first guy, so it kind of, I kind of feel like you've worked in that, you really know it, you understand it. If you would be willing to keep that as a suggestion, and you stay with the Transportation Commission, and we give Michael A-BAG, does that kind of work?
Well, that gives me just one. And I'm feeling like, since I've been demoted, I'd like to have another.
Okay, well, and we can do that. I just, you know, unfortunately, Pete's locked into these, so...
Yeah, so that's where I'm counting. Pete has already had a lot of representation. So I feel like, yeah, EBC makes sense for me to stay on either Transportation or A-BAG. I would love to have either of those.
What's your feeling?
You know, I would like to stay on Transportation, but in part because it's pretty complex, and I think you would do a great job. I told you that before, Nick. But it's, it's very Byzantine in a way that it takes a while to kind of catch up to speed with what's, what's going on there. You know, I don't know. I think I could do a good job continuing on, but I, you know, I'm not, I know, I can't argue. I've been able to do it for the last couple of years, so...
Can't you just both go to all the meetings? I mean, if you both went to the meetings, then that would be a way for you to sort of pass on the knowledge and then...
Sure, but, and I have gone to some of the meetings, but, you know, sitting in the audience is no...
Right.
There's no influence, so...
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, in any case, I, if I'm going to pass this off, I'd pass it off for 2018. I think there's one more meeting this year.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Nick, would you be interested in A-BAG?
Yeah, I could do A-BAG if we, if we agree that I could do Transportation in the next time around.
I'd be happy. I have one more year, I think, I'd be...
Transportation the next time around, then A-BAG would be good. I have a great interest in that as well. But now I'm worried about Michael.
So, is there a decision on Transportation?
We're going to give that to, Pete's going to keep that. So then...
And Nick is still the alternative, alternate, right?
Sure.
And then you, then if Nick takes A-BAG, then, so if the alternate goes, they just sit in the audience? I mean, I, I could be the alternate for that if Nick wants to be the, the main on A-BAG. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so what, you're, for A-BAG?
So for A-BAG, I would be the alternate. Instead of Nason Pilch, it would be Pilch, Michael.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, and then the alternate for the Transportation?
I'd say if Nick is going to take that over, he should definitely...
Okay.
Makes sense.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. You're going to do just one more meeting, and then Nick's going to do it next year?
No, even one more year.
One more year, I see, okay.
Okay, and then we need an alternate for the JPA, for the East Bay Energy. Michael, would you like to do that?
I'm not sure they want me on that one.
That's probably true, okay.
I'm not real enthusiastic about it. But, you know, if they want, you know, a gadfly, sure, I'll. If you want to ship me out there to be a gadfly, that's...
No, let's, let's not do that.
Out of that one.
Yeah, I think you have the right skill set, but, you know, that's the thing. You tend to kind of get more behind it. I mean, I can do it if nobody else wants to go down there.
You go all the time, right?
Rochelle, do you want it?
I'm not, not for the energy.
It's pretty wonky.
Board, it seems, yeah, it seems wonkier than...
She's kind of low-energy on it.
A lot. All right. So who did we end up putting there?
Well, Nick, but we still need an alternate.
Okay.
That's all.
Do you go all the time?
To the EBC?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I was the alternate, I'd never have to go?
Oh, ever? Well...
Well, rarely.
Recently, they've been having like double meetings, two meetings a month, so I have had to call Pete in a few times. But, yeah, it's mostly going to be once a month, and mostly I'll be able to go. It's, it's an evening meeting, so...
It's, it's a really exciting group to be part of, because they're just starting up, and there's all this stuff going down that is, you know...
The first, the first Wednesday is hard for me, but I could do the third Wednesday.
Yeah, the third Wednesday is the usual meeting, and the first Wednesday is if they needed a special meeting.
I'll, I'll just put myself down as the alternate, and if neither one of us can go, we'll, we'll send Michael, and he'll beg us to come back.
Yeah.
The, there is actually a meeting on Wednesday that neither Pete and I can go to. If someone wants to go, I don't think, you can't be a representative, but you could just see. So it's probably not, not very interesting, but if you want to sit in the audience.
Okay, well, I can't go to that one. Okay, so let me read these through one more time to make sure we have them all. Okay, Alameda County Mayor is mayor and vice mayor. Alameda County Transportation is Pete and Nick. Library is done. A-BAG is Nick and Michael. League of California Cities is myself and Michael. Waste Management is Pete and Rochelle. Housing is Pete. JPA for Sportsfield is Rochelle and Pete. And the Energy Joint Powers is Nick, and I'm his alternate. And to Health Board, we have the two-by-two, mayor and vice mayor. Pension is the mayor and I put the vice mayor.
Sure.
They're really easy. They last like two seconds. Well, they don't need more of it. And then D-PAG is the vice mayor by code. Okay, so can...
And, well, maybe I can do this. If we're going to make a formal motion, I'll mention this later. this later.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve this as decided?
So moved.
Second.
Poll the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay.
And I would like to express an interest in being considered by the mayor for one of the slots on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which is, would be one of your appointees, conceivably.
I don't think I have an appointee.
Yeah, that.
We can talk about it.
Okay.
I have heard that's my understanding.
Okay, I know the Mayor's Con, the Mayor's Conference has one, is that what you mean? Okay.
The Mayor's Conference has one, yeah.
Okay.
Good, good.
I was like, wait.
That's, that's very.
Okay. Okay, we've done that. Are there any other future agenda items?
No.
Oh, boys. Okay, the next city council meeting will be Monday, January 8th. There will be no meeting on December 18th. So in the spirit of the holidays, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season. And with that, we are adjourned.
Ho, ho, ho.